Hereby call Tor the Roseville Economic Development Authority meeting for Monday, February 24th, 2025. Mr. Executive Director, would you call the role, please?
Member Graff?
Here.
Member Strawn?
Here.
Member Schroeder?
Here.
Member Power?
Here.
President Rowe?
Here. And with us at the dais, we have our city attorney, who's going to fill in, if needed, for the EDA, right? Rachel Tierney. And then also our city manager, who is the executive director of the EDA, Pat Trudgen, on my left, on the other end of the dais. We also will have guests and staff participating as items come up on the agenda. I would remind folks, and this applies to both the EDA meeting, as well as the council meeting that'll follow this, we do have a copy of the meeting materials in a binder in the back of the room for members of the public to access if needed. And we do have extra copies of the agenda on the back table with that binder also, which are available for people to use for their own personal use. We'd ask folks, if you have a cellphone, to silence it or otherwise assure that it doesn't disrupt the meeting this evening. And I think with that, we can proceed to the Pledge of Allegiance. So we'll ask folks to stand if they're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next on our agenda is approval of tonight's agenda. I guess I'll just ask, is there any objection from members of the EDA as to the agenda, since there is only one item on it?
No.
Hearing no objection, I think we can proceed with the agenda as presented. That then brings us to public comment. We will provide an opportunity for general public comment at the start of the council meeting, which will immediately follow this meeting. So that's usually our practice on EDA nights, is to do the general public comment at the start of the council meeting. That then brings us to our business items, and our first business and only business item this evening, is to receive updated information from our consultant StanTech, related to our housing market study that we've been undertaking, and get a presentation from StanTech on some of the newest information and some options for the council to consider. And we have our community development director, Janice Gunlock, with us this evening to introduce this item. Welcome, Ms. Gunlock.
Thank you, President Rowe, members of the board. Before I turn over to StanTech to give the presentation tonight, I just wanted to make a few comments to ensure that there's not a misunderstanding of what's being asked of the EDA tonight, and more specifically, what's not being asked of you. This information is just information. We're not asking the EDA to establish any new policies regarding housing production or preservation, and we're not asking you to allocate any funds to any programs. This is just information at this point. The prioritization exercise we're asking you to engage in is important only in the sense that we don't want the study to reflect anything you don't want in the study. So we recognize that the EDA's housing goals may align differently than with what the market study says that we might be able to absorb here in Roseville. And so we wanted to make sure that, in the case of housing policy, the study reflects other sort of market forces, or non-market forces that are relevant in the EDA making certain decisions. And so, for example, there may be infrastructure, public safety concerns that impact your decisions on housing policy, and we don't want the study to reflect certain preservation or production strategies that don't align with what your wants and desires are for the community. We also recognize that, as you receive this presentation tonight, that there are certain preservation or production efforts that are not practical here in Roseville, or may not be politically palatable. And again, we don't want those reflected in the final study, if they are not in alignment with the EDA or council's goals. But I do want to touch on one last purpose of the study, and it was to better understand where we might want to spend our local affordable housing aid funds, also referred to as LHA. This is our housing sales tax proceeds that the legislature created a couple of sessions ago. We are collecting those proceeds. We do have to spend them by year four of their receipt, and if we don't spend them, they do have to be returned back to the state. But the state law is very prescriptive on what those funds can be spent on, primarily affordable housing or homelessness prevention. And so, to the extent practical that this study uncovers needs that align with how you might be able to spend that LHA funding, now you've got some information that can allow you to more meaningfully spend it or program it within that allotted period of time, as opposed to sending it back to the legislature. So I just wanted to make those comments before I turn it over to Tom, who will go through the implementation strategy, or the strategies for implementation. And he also has some updated information from January. There's a lot of stuff there, so we didn't want to spend too much time on that, given the prioritization exercise and trying to wrap up the study. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tom, and he can go through his slides, and then we can certainly help address questions collectively, unless you have questions for me.
I just wanted to clarify, once again, we're not also being asked to do the actual prioritization exercise this evening. That would be a follow-up activity. This information this evening is to inform that, for then, for the EDA to take that back as a sort of a homework assignment.
That's correct. We did pass out the worksheet, because we wanted you to do that on your own. But we also wanted to make sure you understood what all the various strategies are before you're asked to rate them. But you can certainly reach out to me if any questions, in addition to asking Tom any questions.
Right.
So with that, I'm going to turn over to him.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janice.
Hello, and welcome back.
Hello. Pleasure to be with you again. I am looking forward to this conversation, and as Janice teed up really well, the purpose is to, you know, we've spent some time identifying some of the housing needs in Roseville, which can be addressed in many, many different ways, which have different budget implications. They have different staffing implications. Some of them are in competition with each other for resources, some may not be. Some of them have little resource requirements. I have not done a housing study where I've assembled a menu of strategies that are suitable for a specific location that has quite this number of strategies for your consideration. I want you to understand that, given what we've learned about Roseville, any or all of these are suitable for addressing housing needs specific to Roseville. But of course, you know, we expect that as you move forward and make priorities for implementation, there will be some that, you know, at a minimum, are of most interest initially, and some that, you know, either you're not interested in at all, or that, you know, get put on a second tier for a time. So, again, as Janice said, the purpose tonight is to talk through these with you, and make sure that you understand the character of each of these strategies, and, you know, some of the implications for implementation, for resources, so that you're in a good position to think after the meeting about, well, which of these am I enthusiastic about? And which of these do I think, you know, address the most pressing needs? And which of these do I think are the most easily accomplished? Those kind of considerations. So I do want to, full screen this. Full screen mode. And I do want to, I reread this. This was where we left off at the last conversation. I do want to come back to it. I reread it, and it still seems like a really fair summary of some of the assets, and needs, and opportunities that we have here, and sets up for the strategies in the subsequent pages. So as I said last time, you know, unbalanced of all the things we learned, Roseville is an extremely desirable location. In my view, it's got characteristics that will be durable, difficult to move from that location of desirability to a location that is not seen as desirable in the region, just because of your distinct natural assets, your location with respect to the downtowns and such. Another asset is your existing broad diversity of housing types that meet a lot of community needs. Existing organizational infrastructure and expertise, and I particularly want to note the expertise of your community development staff that have overseen this process, but also have given really valuable input at times, and sharpened some of these strategies, and some of the analysis as well. I think you're very fortunate to have staff that have this level of skill with respect to housing and community development in general. Another asset is already having made some regulatory changes that opened the door to housing. Some of the constraints are land availability. As you know, your opportunities for new development are more scarce. Just the development context in general, it's becoming more expensive to develop, harder to make a development pencil out. Of course, that's true everywhere. Rent levels and home sale prices have risen, putting strain on a lot of households. And local CDCs themselves, affordable housing organizations are in a, some of them are in a place where they're somewhat stressed, and less capable of bringing resources to some of these things at the current time. We don't expect that's going to be a long-term situation. Key needs, affordable housing options, despite the fact that there's, that you have provided a tremendous amount, cultivated, fostered a tremendous amount of affordable housing in the last five or 10 years. It's still a community need. There are a lot of folks in your community that are paying over 30% or over 50% of their incomes on housing, so that remains a need. The era of your housing stock means that some of those housing units have maintenance needs at that point in time. You have elderly residents and financially precarious households that are needy. And you would benefit from some strengthening of the networks, that you actually have a rich set of networks that support this work, but some strengthening of those networks would benefit you. Opportunities. A locational opportunity would be to cultivate new housing either near Roseville, or Rosedale, as has been done at some of the other regional malls. You have an opportunity for additional small-scale infill housing, and some of that is small-scale multifamily, some can be just single-family. An opportunity to preserve, you have a rich supply of older apartment buildings, so there's an opportunity to continue to stabilize that, and maintain its condition, and preserve its affordability. You have an opportunity to do additional targeted zoning changes to ease smaller-scale infill production. And as Janice referenced, you have an opportunity to leverage this new resource, the metro sales tax resource. So with that, I want to start with a sort of an overview of housing strategies, as well as we put together a set of strategies that particularly relate to homelessness and precarious, financially precarious households. After this, we'll go back and talk about these one at a time. But I wanted to say a few things about this diagram in a more general way. You can see it's divided between production strategies, you know, the creation of new housing units of different kinds that meet needs, preservation strategies to address some of the needs that we've talked about, and others, and a capacity building strategy related to your housing trust fund. You'll see that some of the boxes are darker colored, and some are lighter colored. That's a way that we're making note to the fact that some of these strategies are things that you have already been doing. The ones that are lighter colored are strategies where you have already, in some way, been active in that strategy. And we may be recommending that that continue, or we may be recommending that there's a way to strengthen that strategy. But we want to be careful to reflect back to you all the good work that you're already doing. The other thing I will say is that, as you move from the left side of this diagram to the right side of the diagram, the strategies, further right are strategies that require a more empowered approach. They may require property acquisition, things of that kind, certainly probably more financial support as you move right. So those are the more assertive public sector strategies. And the ones on the left are less so. I think that's where I'll leave off with just the general overview, and just come right into the strategies. Are there any questions at this point? Okay. I'm going to jump back here just real quick and note, these initial three strategies are part of a continuum of strategies that are very commonly seen. You know, fostering market-rate apartments, and oftentimes, there's no public sector involvement needed at all. Sometimes there may be, to provide a little bit of financial support. Inclusionary units in new apartments is a way of requiring that a market-rate apartment building has some footprint of affordable housing units within that apartment building. And the rent-restricted affordable housing, the dominant example of that is some of the housing that you've seen here, that is built foundationally on tax credits these days, almost always, and then a layers of other funding that allow that to be established for a 30-year period or something similar to that, at a certain rent cap and affordability level. So those three we're going to start with, talking about, I like to, I think it's valid to, in a city like Roseville, to say, you benefit from additional market-rate apartments. It signals to the metropolitan area that you're continuing, that you're a desirable location, you're continuing to renew your housing stock. It's not just shoreview and Vatness Heights that get the new suburban amenitized apartment developments. This is an attractive location for that as well. So, you know, it competes with land for other housing types. The land is scarce. And you have some being developed right now. But it's desirable to see some market-rate apartments in the mix. Oftentimes, this requires no city financial support. Occasionally, the developer will come and say, because of extraordinary acquisition costs, or, you know, maybe there are site conditions that need to be remediated to put us on a fair footing with a greenfield site, we want to ask you to consider some financial support. And that certainly can be supported by public policy if you choose to do it. The second in this sort of continuum, inclusionary units in new apartments. This is a strategy that is widely practiced around Twin Cities suburbs. All three of the suburbs to the north of Roseville are practicing this in some way, shape, or form. So it typically builds on a policy that says, either we want all-new apartment development to have a certain percentage of affordable units in it, or if an apartment development is coming to the city of Roseville to ask for public sector support, in that instance, we will require a certain amount of affordable units to be built into that. The complementary policy that needs to be in place for that to work is the willingness to provide city funds to support those affordable units. Usually, it's in the form of tax increment financing, or a tax abatement, where that money, those resources come back to the city in subsequent property tax payments. But that's generally the way these are set up. You have received, you have seen an awful lot of affordable housing development recently, so I don't see this as being a priority strategy, given that you're building affordable housing in a lot of other ways. But some feel that having those affordable units in a mixed-income format, there's a real benefit to that. So for that reason, you may want to consider it. This is the tax credit housing, where rents are capped at 50% or 60% of area median income. Tenants will be income-qualified as well, to not earn a certain, more than a certain income. There's a real pipeline of these developments happening around the Twin Cities. They're very competitive. Roseville may have one or two additional sites that are attractive for this in the next five or 10 years, and so I would not be surprised if a tax credit developer comes to Roseville and say, we're interested in this site, and here's the type of development we're interested in doing. There are likely to be 50-unit buildings with the tax credit structure that is most utilized. Now, your Dominion projects were a lot more, they were using 4% tax credits, but 9% tax credits are a little bit more common, and those generally tend to be about 50-unit buildings. Typically, the local financial support is one of those value-capture approaches, either tax increment financing, or some kind of tax payment. And typically, there's some additional funding that the local government may need to contribute to make these pencil out. Not always, but often times. So they're fairly resource-intensive, but they achieve 30 years of affordable housing. To switch gears now, to a strategy that doesn't require resources, and a strategy that you're already pursuing. When you make it, you adjust your zoning ordinance to allow accessory dwelling units, you're adding to the mix of housing locally. You're adding some smaller units that may be more affordable. But they occur as a property owner wants to do them. They're not a subsidized housing unit. They occur as a property owner wants to build something like this and gain from the rental stream. So again, this is a strategy you're already doing. We did a little zoning code research on your zoning code, and have identified the strategy, if you wanted to build on it, is to take a look at some of the constraints on it, and is there a set of those constraints you would be interested in relaxing? And in the instance that you did relax, and we've identified some of those here, in the instance you did relax some of those constraints, you would probably see more development. So that's what the strategy would look like. We spent some time with the zoning code in general, to think about, are there provisions in the Roseville zoning code that, if they're relaxed, could result in additional housing development, or redevelopment, or infill development? And did identify some that we are going to, that you can consider, and that we're going to attach to our report as an appendix. I've outlined a few of those areas here. Allowing more small-scale multifamily by right in certain zoning districts, you know, a number of cities around the region have experimented with that. Increasing the maximum density for multifamily housing in certain zoning districts. We're going to need to strike the third bullet there with allowing minor subdivision applications to be reviewed and approved administratively, because we learned that that's state law, it's not local law. But the fourth bullet, considering relaxing some of the stormwater requirements for small multifamily projects, so that the requirements are more aligned with single-family development than an apartment building, for example, which would make some of those. We talked to a developer who was active, who said, I would, I'm really interested in doing more small-scale multifamily in Roseville. But some of the impediments, to me, are some of these kind of provisions in the zoning code. So we specifically looked at those to see if they're, see what they were, if they were subject to relaxing them, and are teeing those up for you to think about. Again, these strategies, again, are a strategy where no financial resources are required. It's more of a policy and regulatory changes. Now we're moving into strategies that certainly make more assertive use of municipal powers and authorities. It was a really interesting part of the research as well. We, I don't remember if I said on the cover memo that I sent to you, that we interviewed at least 19 people who are working on housing strategies, or informed the analytical side of the report, and discovered some new, interesting, assertive ideas for how they've used their local authorities to advance some of their housing needs. And so, a couple of them involved cities that went out and actually purchased a single-family home property in the middle of a neighborhood, maybe it was the most disinvested home on the block. And varying based on what they identified was their biggest need, they got that lot ready and sold it for redevelopment. And sometimes they met goals of other programs along the way. Richfield, you know, you're probably familiar with Richfield, and it has a tremendous amount of homes, small homes that are pretty similar. And their program focuses on taking out one of the weaker homes on a block, and seeing it, a home developed that's larger, and owner-occupied, and larger, but still compatible in design with neighbors. Bloomington's program, they've got funding to do this with 27 new construction homes. And they're targeting it to different types of developers. Some are going to be, I think some will end up being land trust homes, but some will be just privately-owned homes that fit into the neighborhood. They're encouraging people to come to them with a developer, and they're pairing this program with a program that fosters, or builds development capacity for emerging developers, who are taking some of these on as some first small-scale development that they're doing. So they're trying to meet multiple, St. Paul has a program like that as well, trying to meet multiple purposes with that. So that just opens the door to a lot of creativity, and sort of an infill ownership setting, you know, to the extent that you're really interested in ownership strategies. These are strategies that you could consider. I think the last one in this group, nope, second-to-last one in this group, is hotel-to-housing conversion. Where we have, we saw some of this during COVID pandemic, where hotels were struggling. The case study here that we're elevating is Hennepin County buying some of those hotels and doing some emergency housing, which I don't think is what you would want to do here. But since that immediate need expired, they have transitioned those to permanent housing units. I don't know the degree to which they all have kitchens and bathrooms. In some cases, they may be SROs. In some cases, they may be large enough units that they were able to get a small kitchen in them. But that's an example that we've seen in Hennepin County take on. Know that you have some hotels Know that you have some hotels that are older properties, and it could be considered here. We also found a link to a set of national case studies, and I think there may be a dozen case studies in that link, of other cities that have taken on this approach. If you're transitioning to smaller units like this, clearly, it's gonna meet some needs that, you know, that are met by smaller unit rentals. You're gonna want to have a strong partner and service provider be in this endeavor with you. That's also true of some of them that we'll see later in terms of the homelessness strategies. This is the last production strategy, and it's less of a production strategy and more of a supporting homeowners. But what it does is, once again, this is the city of, the example is the city of Bloomington. Once again, they have gone out and purchased homes, and they actually own 41 homes across Bloomington. And they are the property manager who is renting these homes for five years to a tenant household. And their idea is that there's a whole group of people who would like to be owners, but maybe they're, they don't have high enough credit rating, maybe they don't have a down payment saved up, but they've got steady jobs, they've got other characteristics that are supportive of that. They can rent one of those units for five years from Bloomington, pay a rent, and pay an escrow on top of that. And at the end of that five years, they get the accumulated escrow to go out and make a down payment on a home. In the meantime, they have had attention paid to their credit rating if that was an issue. They've had some homeowner coaching, and they've also maintained a home as a renter for five years. So they've been building up the skills to do that. They've been building up the capital to do that. After they leave, that home is rented to another family that stays there for five years. So you can see, it's a recycling program and building capacity for households to move into homeownership. I just thought that was really inspiring. So those are the production strategies, and maybe I'll pause there because I don't think I've allowed anybody a chance to ask any clarifying questions on any of those.
Questions on the production strategies that have been outlined? I did have a question, just, and I can't remember exactly where this fell, but talking about looking at increasing density in our zoning code in certain types of districts. And I was thinking about, of course, we're getting a new sort of system statement plan from Met Council, and I think there's already discussion about how that's gonna have increased density requirements across several different categories, including most likely Roseville's category. So it's almost something that's gonna be built into the system in a sense because of that, and so I just wanted to make sure I wasn't off-base in thinking that was kind of out there.
No, I think that's right, and if I was gonna give a couple of more specific examples, we did talk to the developer who was working on the site behind Harmer Mall. And he had good things to say about working with the city on that development. He did, and I think it's gonna be a four-story development. He did say that that development just pencils out for him, but it may have penciled out more easily if a five-storys was developed or was allowed. There are other sites around Roseville that may be viable for multifamily if five-storys is allowed instead of four-storys. So there are these increments like that, sort of at different scales, that can make a difference for attracting new development.
Thank you. Other questions?
Could you just please explain? I was unfamiliar with the term "small-scale by right."
Ooh, where's that?
I see the Meyer wrote it down as well.
Yeah, I think if I understand that, that's where you don't, a lot of our multifamily, you have to get a conditional use approval as part of the process. So I think the idea is that rather than having to have a conditional approval, it would just be allowed in the zoning code.
Okay, thank you.
So I believe that's what "by right" means.
That's right, and for a particular developer that I interviewed, it made a big deal to this individual if he was going to need to come and go through a public hearing process as opposed to having it be allowed by right, you know, with, you know, city staff review, you know, still to ensure quality, but not going to a public meeting. So those are certain changes. You wouldn't want to make those across the board because some things absolutely need to go to a public hearing, but those are certain considerations that can be made that, you know, on the margins can ease process and invite more development.
Sure. And just to the height on the development near Harmer and Target, I think one of the challenges that the council, you know, worked with on that particular proposal was that it was very, very nearby existing single-family homes. And so there was a lot of discussion about the relative height.
Yeah.
You know, adding a story and making the development pencil out better versus some of the impacts that we had to weigh of, you know, of the neighbors. Whereas perhaps if somebody wanted to do five stories or some other, you know, height, say, on the site of Rosedale.
Right.
The adjacency issue isn't the same, so that may or may not be, you know, so that's where perhaps by right, something could be done that couldn't be done elsewhere in the community. So I get the sense that we need to kind of maybe look at some of those and make sure we're not over-restricting some things.
Anything else on these?
Just on the water management one.
Yep.
The concern is, some of our areas, we've been working with water management for quite some time in residential, so to remove some of those restrictions is, has to be done very carefully because we do not want to go backwards. We've been putting tanks underground. We've had flooding on Fairview under the 36 for years. Now that's abated because of some of our work, but that would be something to keep in mind with that.
Absolutely. And none of these are like, as a, something you want to just take in and impose across the board without careful thought. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the reference in this case was if you have a set of townhomes, you know, covering an acre of land. I think that this developer thought his stormwater requirement might be a retaining pond where, if you had a set of, single-family homes could be almost as dense, wouldn't require the same stormwater.
Interesting.
So you might find, and who knows, I don't have the details of that, so I can't verify that. But you might find that there's instances where it adds flexibility. Now, we're on our preservation strategies. This is one that NOAA preservation refers to naturally occurring affordable housing. These are your older apartment buildings. They're meeting an important need. They need to, it's very important they stay maintained well, that they stay responsive to their residents, but they're meeting an important need. And we also know that there are certain risks with these older properties. They can fall into disrepair, and you're keeping after that with your inspections regime. They can also be acquired by typically an institutional investor in this scenario and then rehab to a more of a luxury format, and those affordable rents go away. Where I see that, and there are local CDCs, Aon is really a leader in this area, that has learned to bring tax credits and other financing to older apartment buildings, compete with that private developer on price, invest to bring that value down to a level where they can still afford that, to rent those at affordable rates. So there's a well-established program that works in some instances. This is, I think, I'm gonna go back to an early comment. It's not wrong for some older buildings to get significant reinvestment and rehab and to see that renewal of the housing stock. This is more of a concern, I feel, where you are seeing this trend, sort of wholesale trend, and you're losing, you know, a significant share of your, you know, traditionally affordable apartment stock. So you get to think about, are we at that place where this becomes an important strategy? I'm gonna add that some of the work you've done in your tenant notification ordinances can create time and space so that for certain buildings, if you want to invite a nonprofit developer to come in and compete for that building, that can be a critical step in creating space for them to say, okay, is this a building that we would like to rehab and keep it affordable and bring investments to? So there's a little bit of a relationship between those two.
Just on this question, or I don't know if it's a question, but anyway, it seems our experience in this area, because we have had for some time a multifamily loan fund to help with rehab, and it doesn't seem to be something that owners have really taken advantage of. It's just been kind of sitting there. And I'm wondering if that's partly because people are sort of hedging their bets and wanting to hold out the opportunity to, you know, have one of these institutional investors, you know, buy the property and rehab it, and they can get cash out of it, and, you know, and it's not as complicated or difficult as trying to maintain the affordability through some of those avenues. So I'm wondering if this strategy almost has to become an acquisition strategy to really work in the sense of, it doesn't seem to be that in the marketplace, people are taking advantage of existing loan programs that have been there for some time, you know. And then we also had a situation where we actually created a tax increment financing district somewhat proactively on a site that we were trying to, you know, preserve the ability to maintain affordability, and we ended up having to, you know, close out the district because the owner didn't want to go that route. And, you know, we tried to get him connected with Aon and things like that. So it seems that you almost have to control the property to make this type of strategy work if I'm, you know, unless I'm oversimplifying or exaggerating the pain that we've had trying to do this.
Yeah, well, I mean, so you've got, I mean, that's really a great way to sort of talk across this issue. You've got multiple positive efforts going on here. You've got your rental licensing, you've got the tenant notification, you've got your multifamily loan program. And then this is sort of another strategy that is, you know, much more assertive. I might be curious, so we didn't do, we didn't do any research on your multifamily loan program, but it could be, that could also be an area of research to look at, you know, have some interviews with folks who you think might, maybe would have wanted to take advantage and talk to them about why they haven't. And maybe you've done some of this research already. Talked to some other cities who have a multifamily loan fund like we identified here, the Richfield as one. But I think they were, one of the things they told me is that they've been having some trouble getting people to take advantage of that as well. So you could do a little more research on that program, but your point is well-taken that it's hard to know what's going on there.
Sure. And there's competing interests, obviously. Every, you know, people want to preserve their economic opportunities. You can't necessarily force somebody to do something altruistic all the time.
Yeah, absolutely. Land Trust Homes is a program that you're also involved in. It's resource-intensive initially to acquire that home, to own the land underneath that home, to do the set of improvements on the home, and then to sell it at a loss, but so that that home can maintain that affordable price for a household earning 80% or less of area median income in perpetuity. So it's very resource-intensive initially, but then it serves as an asset for you for In conversation with your staff, they thought a strategy associated with this could be to more clearly identify a sustainable funding source for this that sort of puts it on a track to just continue at a production level that you think is appropriate for the city of Roseville. I'm not sure how familiar you are with this, it's a little bit of a movement in manufactured home parks. You're, again, I mean, there's so many of these areas that you're already doing proactive work in. And the proactive work you're doing in your one manufactured home park is in the area of providing some loans to residents there where they're very, have a very difficult time getting bank loans for improvements and repairs to manufactured homes. Also, it's in offering to bring resources to upgrades that the common area needs. So you've been very proactive. This strategy is about something that's slightly different, and that is conversion of a manufactured home park to a cooperative. And it's kind of a perfect corollary to what the NOAA strategy is. Some entity has to compete for acquisition of a manufactured home park on the basis of price, has to write down that value to a level that the occupants of that manufactured home park are paying a reasonable rent that accords just to the care and upkeep and maintenance of that facility now in perpetuity, if they're, and sold into their ownership. Now in perpetuity, they can maintain a price that just aligns with how much it costs to keep the place up. The market demand for that no longer drives the price to a higher and higher level. So there is a lead organization nationally and a lead organization locally that has been integrally involved with all of these conversions. And, you know, if this is a strategy that's of interest, to start to network with Rock USA at a national level. And I think it's North Country, do you know, the North Country Cooperative is the local organization that has worked with the conversions that have happened in Minnesota. I think there have been maybe 15 conversions already in Minnesota, and Richfield and Fridleer are two of them that we know here. Rental licensing, by all accounts, you have a strong rental licensing program. I always like to talk to cities about a tiered program as a best practice, and that tiered program supports a really light oversight regime and a light fee for rental property owners that are good citizens, that attend to complaints, and where there's work that is identified for them, get it done right away. And a graduating regime where those who have a harder time with it, are consistently getting complaints, not attending to those, they're in a regime where they get inspected more frequently, and their rental licensing fee is higher. This is a, a tiered program does not cost more because you're assigning fees that, at a level that pays for the additional oversight. But it is some administrative work to set it up on that basis. I don't know, you know, the responsiveness of rental property owners in Roseville, but if you find that you're struggling with some and expending, you know, an inordinate amount of resources on some, you might consider a tiered licensing program that puts rental property owners in different tiers. How are we doing on time? Am I running long? Okay. We're gonna go faster. Tenant notification, we've already talked about. You have a very solid ordinance in that regard. I was impressed also by the range of locally-funded home maintenance and rehabilitation programs that you've set up in Roseville that address some things that county programs and state programs don't address. Again, if there's a strategy in, you know, building that, it might be to identify some steady, reliable funding sources that you want to use for that program. Another ownership format is an ownership format that is part of associations, and this is And this is, again, something that your staff has learned to implement. But there's, sometimes in the common space and the utilities upgrades needed that they may not have set aside enough capital reserves for. And the state legislature sets a system in place, a regime in place called housing improvement districts that allow you to advance that money for those, that deferred maintenance and make it up through revenues that they pay over time. If they want to opt in, it's on their request. They want to opt into a housing improvement area for that purpose. So just to continue to do that as you have needs in the community. You've established a housing trust fund. I think I did it fairly recently. I know that was part of the sales tax regime. There are benefits to having that. The strategy here is just to use the opportunity to think about, are there other funding streams that you want to dedicate to this? Depending on, you know, this menu of housing strategies that you want to fund and which ones need dedicated funding, you may want to build that fund with some additional funding sources. We learned a lot, just were really happy to have the opportunity to learn a lot in the homelessness area about what makes for a strong homelessness program. And what we learned is having a large number of resources that typically are provided by your partners, whether those are social service, mental health, health, facilities, large number of resources you can tap on, paired with a case management approach. Because every household that's homeless, every household that's precarious, has different needs. So you have a lot of, you have unusual for a city, your own staff that provides a case management approach to this area. And they get referrals from the schools and other places. And you, in Ramsey County and in other relationships, you also have a large pool of resources. So you are in a very good place to attend to these needs in some ways that are best practices. We did identify some gaps and we do have some recommendations for where you might put some additional resources or attention. Some of the things we learned about weaknesses in that resource pool are in some of the programs that Ramsey County provides. It's a wide range of resources, but in some cases, there's a backlog in being able to devote those resources and when they're needed at a certain time. I'm not sure if there's a city role in trying to plug that gap, but certainly in your relationships, you can continue. And maybe in your common cause with other suburban Ramsey cities, you can continue to advocate for that. And maybe there, maybe in some of the specific areas, there is a municipal role that you could fill. We didn't come across any. The second area that we identified is in the area of discretionary resources that your own social workers and case managers can utilize. It's not uncommon for them, as you probably know, to come across a need, someone that's in crisis, and to need to go buy some groceries for them, to need to do an emergency rent payment while you're pulling in some longer term resources. And to have those discretionary resources in the short term can be critical rather than, and can be time efficient rather than looking around for who can help with this, who can help with this. And they do have resources in the churches, in other areas where they can get those things. But those are two areas that you ought to consider to be potential areas where you can devote some resources on the programmatic side. On the fiscal development side, where are we at?
We allocated an hour. We're almost there.
Okay. Yes. On the fiscal, let me, on the fiscal development side, I'll be very quick with this. There are two cities that have purchased a facility for transitional housing or for a shelter, continue to own and do the property management on that, and had partners come in and do the shelter management or the transitional housing management. So those are models in your, in these examples you can look at. The last thing is settled, the Sacred Settlement. And there was, we had a wonderful conversation with the pastor there and the director of Sacred. And there was a specific suggestion by the pastor. He's going out to other churches in Roseville and other churches in other areas. But the churches he's going to in Roseville, he's really valued the partnership he's gotten from you all on that project. And he thinks it would be persuasive, as he's talking to other churches, if he could go along with someone who represents the city to be able to say, the city supports this. Here's some of the ways that we've helped with the Prince of Peace, I think is the name of the church, Sacred Settlement. And, you know, we, so as a partnership to go out and encourage other communities to do that. It's a model that's working. It could work further. Okay, so that's the last of those examples.
Any questions on the homelessness strategies? Or the, just prior to that, I think there were some of the, I can't remember what it was.
Preservation strategies, sure.
Thank you. From the council or the EDA. Apparently, we know everything.
You are extraordinary.
We'll take that win.
I'm going to just show you what these last two resources are. This is a resource, the resource implication slide here that acknowledges that these don't all need funding. And where they do need funding, the left column is tax increment or tax abatement. Where they do need funding, if that funding in that can come in that column, where it's coming just from the property, then it doesn't compete with other properties. So you can take a look at that. And then the final one is the questionnaire that you're requested to fill out afterwards. And how I would suggest you do this is, is take your, is put an X in your, in three to five strategies under high impact, the strategies that you think could be highest impact in Roseville of all of the strategies. Put three to five Xs under low hanging fruit, under the strategies you think could be most easily accomplished. And put three to five Xs under personal interest in terms of strategies that you could see yourself just as a human individual who cares about these things, dedicating some time to, you know, working on this particular strategy. So that's how that score sheet works. And then it becomes really interesting as you come together and you sort of put your, put, line that up together and see where the clusters of Xs are.
All right, questions on that process? All right, I think we got it. Well, we appreciate the presentation this evening. And hopefully, we didn't kind of give you the bum's rush there at the end. But I think it was, you know, helped fill in a lot of the information that will help us to do this exercise. So we do appreciate that and all the work you've been doing all along on this whole process. So thank you again for that.
I appreciate it as well. Thank you.
Very good. There being no more business before the Economic Development Authority this evening, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Councilmember Groff. It's been seconded by a member Schroeder by a hair. Discussion, none on a motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously. And our EDA meeting is adjourned at 6:57 PM. We'll take a few minutes to transition to the council meeting. All right, hereby call to order the Roseville City Council meeting for Monday, February 24th, 2025 at approximately 6:59 PM. The roll call will stand as called previously for the EDA meeting with all members present. I would just, once again, by way of introduction, introduce our city attorney, Rachel Tierney, who's now functioning as the city attorney in this portion of the meeting, and our city manager, Pat Trudgeon, who is once again back to being the city manager for this portion of the meeting. And we are all council members instead of EDA members. So hopefully, everybody can keep track at home. We did the pledge of allegiance at the start of the EDA meeting, so we won't repeat that here. The next item on our council agenda is to approve tonight's agenda. I'll just double check with staff, are there any changes from a staff perspective, I believe there might be this evening?
Yes, Item 7C, which was to consider a request to form an abatement for unresolved code violations at 1240 Ryan Avenue, can be removed. The violations have been corrected.
All right, so that item will come off the agenda then, presumably. Are there any items that council members would like to change on the agenda or items council members would like to remove from the consent agenda, the brief consent agenda this evening for separate consideration? It does not appear to be the case. We'll do a quick check in with members of the public. If anyone is here for an item in Section 10 of our agenda this evening, also known as the consent agenda, this is our approval of payments, a couple of temporary gambling permits, our over $10,000 purchases, and an Ethernet network agreement with the city, or excuse me, with Roseville Schools. Let us know at this time and we can take that item up earlier in the meeting. Is anyone here for one of those items this evening? It does not appear to be the case. So a motion would be in order to approve the agenda with the exception of Item 7C, which has been removed.
So moved.
Right, it's been moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Schroder to approve the agenda as amended. Discussion on that motion, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And aye opposed. That passes unanimously. We have our agenda for this evening. Next on our agenda this evening is an opportunity for general public comment. This will be a chance for members of the public to speak on items that are not on tonight's agenda but may be of interest to people in the community or related to city business. Once again, as agenda items come forward, generally, there will be an opportunity for public comment at those times. But at the start of each meeting, we do provide an opportunity for general comment, not related to agenda items this evening. Is there anyone here to make comment, public comment under general comment this evening? Right, does not appear to be the case. We'll then proceed with the rest of the agenda. Next on our agenda is recognitions and donations. We have one item in that category this evening, which is a proclamation related to Women's History Month. I will read the proclamation and then a motion to adopt would be in order. The proclamation reads, "Whereas throughout history, extraordinary women have made significant contributions to the growth and strength of our city, state, and nation in countless ways. Whereas through leadership, innovation, ingenuity, and, excuse me, and ingenuity, generations of women have made significant contributions in science, medicine, technology, business, politics, entrepreneurship, and culture. And whereas women have been leaders in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity and in the abolitionist, emancipation, industrial labor, civil rights, and peace movements, creating a more fair and just society for all. And whereas, whether serving in elected positions across America, leading groundbreaking civil rights movements, venturing into unknown frontiers, or programming revolutionary technologies, generations of women that knew their gender was no obstacle to what they could achieve have long stirred new ideas and opened new doors in having had a profound and positive impact on our community. And whereas, despite their contributions, the role of women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in literature, education, science, and culture. And whereas, the theme for Women's History Month in 2025 is moving forward together, women educating and inspiring generations, we celebrate countless pioneering women and their victories, and we will continue to work to build a society where our daughters have the same opportunities and possibilities as our sons. Now therefore be resolved, the city of Roseville hereby declares March 2025 to be Women's History Month in the city."
Second.
Right, it's been moved by Councilmember Schroder, seconded by Councilmember Strawn to approve the Women's History Month proclamation. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none.
I'd just like to add, as there's often been things in the national politics that maybe, or contrary, I still appreciate that our city finds this a valuable proclamation and that we are able to honor it today.
Thank you. If there isn't further discussion, then all those in favor of the proclamation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously. That proclamation is approved. We don't have any items removed from the consent agenda. That brings us right into our business items then. Our first business item this evening is to conduct a public hearing to certify unpaid utility charges and other charges to the property tax rolls in the city. We have our finance director, Michelle Petrick, with us this evening to introduce this item for the council, for the hearing and the council's consideration.
Good evening. The city certifies those delinquent utility accounts that are delinquent in excess of 90 days on a quarterly basis. We previously did it annually, but we've been doing it quarterly since 2010 so that when properties get sold, it is in the property tax records. So these get paid. A few things to note. We sent out 388 letters this quarter. We are not certifying all 388. We did have almost 30% pay, so they are not on this list. But what's of interest is that's the lowest number of letters that we've sent out in the last five quarters. And the total dollar amount that we are certifying to the county is the lowest in five quarters as well. So some of the actions that we have taken in the past year with regard to solidifying interest rate, the collection fee, we are starting to see that that is having an impact and people are making more timely payments. And with that, I'm here to answer any questions or we open the public hearing.
All right, thank you, Ms. Petrick. Are there questions for staff on this certification action this evening? Councilmember Groff?
So the list in our, is the total list?
No, this is after the payments.
After the payment, so this is the scaledown list of it?
Yep.
Thank you.
I was going to count it to check, but I'm not.
I was going to do.
That might prolong, yeah, it might prolong the meeting. Because I've only got so many fingers and toes. With that, are there other questions from the council? All right, then we'll open the public hearing. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to this case, which is to certify these unpaid utility and other charges to the county for collection as assessments of the property tax system. Is there anyone here to speak to this item this evening? Right, does not appear to be the case. We'll then close the public hearing. And would note, once again, I think at our last hearing, the last time we did this, we did actually have somebody come and had a question about their particular property. We were able to pull that one off the list and we didn't certify that one and took care of that separately. So we do, the system does tend to work in that regard. So with that, we do have the request this evening to certify the list as presented in the packet. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Right, it's been moved by Councilmember Groff, seconded by Councilmember Strawn to approve the list and have those items certified by resolution to the county. Discussion on the motion as the maker of the motion, Councilmember Groff?
I'd like to thank staff for bringing this forward because this is an example of really improving our process and something that's worked in a fairly short amount of time when you consider government movement. So thank you to Michelle Petrick and the department for that work.
Right, and as the second, Councilmember Strawn?
I'd just like to add, the amount of the bills that we are certifying per person seems to be lower than in the past as well, which speaks to your work. We're not holding some of these people so long before we get that certified. So I think we see that in the numbers, the total numbers as well. So again, I So, again, I also appreciate the staff work on this, and I think consistency is how we have people pay attention.
All right, other discussion on the motion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of that resolution, certifying those charges to the county, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And aye opposed. That motion passes unanimously. Those charges are certified, or will be certified. With that, then, our second item under business items this evening is a consideration of a request to perform an abatement for unresolved code violations at 2165 Victoria Street North in Roseville, and we have our codes official, David England, with us this evening to bring this item before us. Mr. England?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Once again, we're bringing this property for a request to perform an abatement. We've done this, we've done an abatement, or an abatement's been approved on this property once in 2024, November 25th of 2024, and in June of 2023. The June of 2023 abatement, we did actually conduct. We removed vehicles, same similar as is being requested tonight. In the November 25th case, the property representative brought the vehicles that were onsite into compliance prior to our abatement. We've sent a notice to the property. We've also sent repeat nuisance fines and citations to the property. As of today, there were six vehicles that are inoperable onsite that would be subject to this abatement, and we have not heard any, we've not received any contact from anyone related to the property as of today, or so far today.
All right, thank you. Questions for staff on this requested abatement action? All right, is there anyone representing the property this evening who wishes to speak, or anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this requested abatement at 2165 Victoria Street North? All right, it does not appear to be the case. Council, we've got a request to approve the requested abatement at this property based on the violations that have been observed and are continuing to exist. Council wish to take action on that request?
I would move to recommend the council.
Second.
All right, that's a motion by Councilmember Groff, second by Councilmember Schroder to authorize the abatement as outlined in the staff report, presumably. All right, with that, discussion on the motion, Councilmember Groff?
It's kind of disheartening to have these properties come time after time. I'm wondering if this is kind of an aside, is there something the city we can do to, I mean, it's a nonoccupied property. It's obviously being, in my opinion, being used for, to store vehicles and to repair them. I mean, he, the person who owns the property came and stated that, and I think at the time, the mayor reminded him that you can't actually run a business out of a residential property. So, I'm just wondering, you know, in the future, if there's something we could do to, to not have these kind of repeat things, because it takes staff time, it costs money. I mean, I know we charge for these abatements, but I don't know if we come out ahead on it. So, a little frustration I'm speaking to there, but I support this, of course.
All right, as the second of the motion, Councilmember Schroder?
I agree with everything Councilmember Groff said. You know, I was thinking that too, is if we continue to have a property over and over again, do we want to reconsider adding a, another, some sort of fee to, you know, if you think about when we have violations of, say, you know, underage smoke or drink, that ratchets us up, and maybe we should think about doing something like that in this case as well. So, something to put on the future agenda possibly.
All right, other discussion on the motion, Councilmember Strawn?
I was going to mention the same thing. I think it'd be worth our consideration as a council to talk about a graduated finding system, especially within a certain period of time, like the violations for alcohol, you know, within 36 months. We are talking about this as the third time now in, in less than two years. So, I guess somehow to prove that this is of value. And again, I would be fully supportive of any way that we can get businesses that are in homes that are not, again, not doing the work of the neighbors, as Mr. England is well aware of, the property within my own neighborhood that continues to cause trouble. And it's a bit of like a whack-a-mole trying to find how to pin that down, but I think it's really important that we make sure that our homes are used for housing. Clearly, from our evening, we, we know that we need to actually house people in our, in the houses we have.
Other discussion on the motion?
I too agree that I would like to use on a future agenda discussion of tiered or ratcheting approach to these fines.
All right, and I would just add, I think we need to make sure that, that, you know, paying these abatements and paying these nuisance, repeat nuisance fees isn't a less expensive alternative than, say, renting storage to store these vehicles properly off of a residential property. So, I too agree that we need to have that conversation, and I know that our, I'm pretty sure that our existing repeat nuisance fee system does have ratcheting up, but maybe we just need to review that, perhaps specifically related to code enforcement and repeat violations there, or more broadly, but whatever, I think we do have to have that discussion, because once again, we don't want to be the less expensive alternative for this property owner or any property owner to, to continue to violate the code and not, not operate properly within a residential district.
Can I just add one more thing?
Certainly, Councilmember Groff.
The other thing is, our staff are very patient with these issues. It's not like we just go out and when they get one notice and they're done. They make many attempts to have this notified. It's not, it wouldn't be a surprise to anyone if they're paying attention, so I think we're, we're certainly being more than fair on that.
Correct, correct. Although I imagine the, the more frequent the violation occurs, the less genteel we are in that regard.
It should be.
I should mention, this is also, we did this as a proactive inspection, based on what council put in place in 2018 for these type of properties that are subject to abatement. We visit this monthly, so that's why this is probably coming back so fast, because we have not received an actual complaint on this property. It's been staff initiated, so.
Well, I would just note that, that at least speaking for myself, I do a, I do a proactive inspection of that property. Every time I drive to City Hall, so, I help out in that effort. But I try, I try not to, I try not to put too many calls into staff in that regard. Anyway, that being said, we've got the motion before us then to authorize that abatement. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And aye opposed. That passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. England.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda is to receive an update on the city's volunteer program, and we've got our Assistant City Administrator, City Manager Rebecca Olson, as well as our Volunteer Coordinator, Rachel Boggs, with us this evening to give us an update on volunteering in Roseville.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember. Thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight and provide a quick update on our volunteer program. It's been a while, it's been several, several years actually, probably since we've done a formal update to you regarding our volunteer program, but we thought this was a really opportune time as we're kind of diving into our strategic plan and developing that, because volunteers have a huge impact in our community and looking at ways we can continue to leverage them throughout our strategic plan is going to be vital. In addition, our volunteer program is a strong cornerstone of our community engagement, so we thought it was a great opportunity for us to share the information, the successes, the stories, the numbers, all that for the council to hear. So, I'm here really just to lay that foundation, and I'm going to turn it over to our volunteer manager, Rachel Boggs, for all the information here.
Thank you. We do have a couple new council members, so I'm not sure if they know the history. So, in 2014, a full-time volunteer coordinator was hired by the city to use volunteers to enhance programming and services. In the last 10 years, we are very proud the volunteer program has continued to expand and adapt, and the volunteer program allows staff to engage with residents in a different way while also increasing staff capacity to accomplish goals. Often, it's not just about using volunteers to help a program, work at events, but it is a different way for us to engage with our residents. So, a quick overview of the size and scope of our program overall, in 2024, we did have 5,446 hours. That is the equivalent of 2.62 full-time employees. The total value of volunteer time was $197,744. We get that number from using the independent sector's value of volunteer time. We, I think in Minnesota, it is higher than other places in the nation. We use that number, we times it by our hours, and then that is how we get that. In 2024, Roseville volunteers volunteered at 1,557 different shifts. That just means how many times we had volunteers volunteering with us. Almost all city departments have volunteers. Roles may include commissioners, police reserves, office volunteers, and park and rec volunteers. And a fun fact, four years and 269 days is the average time a Roseville volunteer volunteers. We all know we have volunteers who have been here 20, 30, 40 years, but I thought that was nice. It shows that we do have some longevity with our volunteers.
So, that's the time from their first volunteer with the city?
Correct, yep.
On average, okay. So, it's not the number of hours they have actually volunteered.
No.
That's, I just wanted to clarify that.
No.
Thank you.
You may not know, we are a volunteer, our volunteer program is a service enterprise. So, if you do not know what that is, we are very proud. We were the first city in the United States to become a service enterprise. I took some of this language directly from their website. A service enterprise is an organization that strategically leverages volunteers to achieve operational efficiency and greater, greater social impact, and we are very proud. Usually, that's the top 11% of nonprofits that have that. We also use VolGistics as our volunteer database for tracking and reporting. It's relatively simple, but gets the job done for what we need. We have a pretty comprehensive way that we onboard our volunteers and use the process, which is seven steps. It includes program planning, job development, recruitment, screening, placement, orientation, and supervision. We really want our volunteers to have a good experience as well as our staff. In 2024, we had 40 different, unique volunteer categories and hundreds of separate volunteer roles. So, what that means is Rosefest would be a unique category, and then under Rosefest, we would have all the different roles. We could not have some of our special events without our volunteers. I will always like to mention, our interpretive center at the Nature Center is only open because of the 18 volunteers that we have. It's six days a week and 1,500 hours in 2024, so truly an example of how we very effectively use our volunteers. Additionally, our arboretum, which is a lovely space we all know here in Roseville, we had 88 green team volunteers, and they spent over 850 hours last year. In 2025, some of these are personal goals and some of these are interdepartmental goals. Doing some volunteer satisfaction surveys after events, we think we do a good job, but we would like to know if we aren't, so we can improve. Finalizing our service enterprise, recertification, and the expansion of volunteer events with the acquisition of our new natural resource staff. It's my understanding we will be doubling those events this year. And then increasing the accuracy in capturing volunteer hours. We're very confident with the hours we do capture, but we feel like there's probably a lot more happening that we aren't capturing, so. So, thank you. I have always felt very supportive by council and staff here at Roseville, so I do want to say thank you, especially to Rebecca. And any questions?
There was just one thing I wanted to highlight. When she talks about the volunteer program process, particularly with the onboarding, I am pretty sure that Ms. Boggs, like, talks to every single volunteer in the city through that onboarding process, and she really, it makes a personalized approach for each volunteer to figure out their skill sets and where to place them so that they have a positive experience, and then we also get some, some benefit to it. So, it is a very time-intensive situation, and with the growing and expansion of our volunteer program, it takes more and more of her time, but without her, I don't know that we would have as much of a success as we currently do, so. Thank you.
I would definitely echo those thanks and appreciation. I think when the program started in 2014, we had high hopes, and I don't think the program has ever fallen short of those hopes and expectations, and it's in no small part because of the staff person, people that we've had in that role from the beginning, and certainly Rachel is exemplary of that and very much appreciative of the work she does, and I think we hear it constantly from the volunteers too, so that's, that's reinforcement. Questions or feedback from councilmembers? Councilmember Groff?
Mostly feedback. I really appreciate the inclusivity that you do with your programming. Many, I, I have never heard anyone complain about the volunteer program. They've all had a positive experience, and it is, thanks to you, I think that it's a difficult position, and you fit that perfectly, which we're very fortunate to have in Roseville, and I think it's a, a really wonderful program. I thank you for the work.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Schroder?
Again, thank you, yes. And actually, my guess would be we are underestimating those hours.
Yes, I agree.
Because I don't think I've ever walked through Villa Park where there isn't somebody doing something there. There's a few people there, I swear they actually live there, because it doesn't matter what time I walk through, they're there. And so, and, and they all seem to, when I talk to them, the attitude and everything, it's just really, really positive, so it's something that our city should be really proud of, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Strawn?
I just wanted two things. One, we heard time and again this last week when we were interviewing candidates, how many people were referred to apply as commissioners because of you?
Yep.
You know, Rachel said I should, and how great for someone to feel like you value them, and everybody wants to feel valued, so really, thank you. And then the other thing is, last summer, when I went to an event at the Nature Center, there was a young mom and her, I don't know, five, six-year-old son, and I just thought how great that he could be there and you could feel like that was, he was as welcome as, as she was as the volunteer, and she just said she, and I think she was actually recently featured in something, but she just, just felt so welcome, and she just kind of out of the blue decided to call, and the fact that it was really important to her, and she wanted to show her son how important it was and that he could be there and, and join her. So, thank you for including not just an adult without a child, but a, a single mom who maybe went if at all to do it otherwise.
And Councilmember Bauer?
I would also note that the great work that's been done, not just with the work that volunteers do towards the city, but the sense of community that creates. There's been many events, we've worked, you know, many events now that have food afterwards or other things, and I, they've been to a number of those. People stick around just as long as they've been volunteering, talking about what's going on. It's really connecting people from different parts of the city, not just their neighbors, and I think those relationships continue then with future volunteering or seeing out and, like, there's a lot of other great benefits that are happening, just the work you're doing. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep, and I would concur with the, the notion that, that we're probably undercounting those, those hours. I think one of the challenges probably that we have in the volunteer world, the term for it in the emergency management world is self-reporting. A lot of times, you'll get, you know, first responders who self-report to a disaster and start doing something, and they're not always accounted for in the chain of command and the structure and, and so, and it can be problematic from that point of view, but I think on the volunteer side of things, it's great that people, you know, maybe that live around Villa Park, they see something, they show up and they do something about it, you know, and it's, they don't even have to go get credit for it from the city. So, that's, that's really cool that we have that going on in our community, and it'd be great if we can account for it, but we certainly don't want to discourage it from happening either, so appreciate that. And, and once again, I think this, this program is, is a model for how to do this right and for other communities to look to, and I just, I hope that it continues to grow in, in, you know, use and, and participation by volunteers, because I know volunteering is changing. You know, Roseville became Roseville because of a whole different type of volunteering back, you know, 30 years ago. People would be on a committee for, for 20 years, and, and, you know, they would just be spending hours and hours and hours dedicating to that. It's not necessarily the way people do that anymore. It's a lot more of sort of one and done, or plug in when you can and do what you can, and so to have a program that can adapt and can work with people where they are, I think is really important, and I'm glad that, that that's a part of what we do as well, and I'm sure that will continue. So, thanks also, of course, to all of our volunteers in Roseville, because the program isn't, isn't a program unless we have those volunteers, and, and, you know, I think everybody in every department that interacts with the volunteers would say, we can't get done what we need to get done in this community without that, so, or within this organization. So, appreciate all the work of the volunteers, and certainly it, it starts with the, the management of that process and in the work that you do, so we appreciate that, and thank you again, and very much appreciative of the presentation this evening.
Thank you.
And as I say at the end of our interviews of commissioners, now you can go enjoy the rest of your interview, and we'll, we'll continue with our business.
And Rachel will call you, is what he also said. And Rachel will call you, is what he also said.
Yeah, he does.
With that, that brings us to an update. We've had our Equity and Inclusion Commission in place for a few months now. And we've got an opportunity to kind of have a bit of a check-in as was outlined as we established the commission back in 2024. So I'll turn it over to staff to, and I'm not sure if it's Ms. Olson or Antonio that's gonna, that's gonna kick it off, but whoever it is, I'll turn it over to you and look forward to hearing from you this evening.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. I will kick it off. I'm going to provide a little bit of background. I do also want to recognize that we have a member of our Equity and Inclusion Commission here as well. So we're just going to kind of start and we'll tag team this. And then if you have questions at the end, please let us know. So what I wanted to do is really just start with the four areas that we're going to cover tonight is we're going to go through a little bit of the background, the purpose and scope of this current commission, the phases that we've taken to approach the work that the commission has done so far. And then we're going to talk a little bit about what an upcoming work plan could look like. So I wanted to start with the background. And as many of you know, you were here, you were part of this. But maybe the people that are watching do not know. The creation of the Equity and Inclusion Commission really started a while ago. And it started when council tasked all of the commissions to talk about their, their scope, their duties, and their functions. And at the time, we had something called the Human Rights, Inclusion, and Engagement Commission. And so they actually proposed some changes to that scope, duties, and functions, which led to further conversation with council, the community, as well as that commission. Ultimately, what happened is the, the scope of that commission was a little bit different than what, what we needed at the time. It, it transformed. And so council had an intentional conversation about what's the purpose? What are we looking for? What do we want the people on this commission to do? So they, in your packet, all of this information is there. But they had this specific conversation about understanding what's the purpose of, of this commission? This morphed into what ultimately became the Equity and Inclusion Commission with a different scope, a different set of duties and functions. There was also an intention to, what, what is the structure going to look like? There was conversation. And I do want to just, you know, mention that there was a subcommittee that was formed with former councilmember Atten and councilmember Schröder that did a lot of work on this and ultimately came forward. And the council decided that really the commission structure was the best structure for this work to go forward in. As part of that, in order to make sure that we were setting things up intentionally and that they were set up for success, we built in this kind of just a touch point. So that's what this meeting is, is it's that touch point, that check-in, to give you all an update, to make sure we're all in the same, we're, we're headed down the right path if you have any changes or anything. So with that, I am just going to highlight what that purpose was that we outlined in the ordinance for this commission. So in that ordinance, it specifically says that this commission is there to serve in advisory capacity to council and staff. And the purpose is to apply that equity inclusion lens to really all of those things there, but kind of the city operations. So the policies, the procedures, projects, programs, operations, and initiatives. So with that in mind, some of the other duties that are outlined there under the, the ordinance relate to three key areas. And it's, one, providing review and feedback on department equity inclusion work plans, which are intended to advance equity inclusion throughout our organization. And also similarly, providing the review and feedback on our Strategic Racial Equity Action Plan, or SREAP. One thing I do want to call out here is when this commission was formed and when it was created, we had not yet started our strategic planning. And so at the time, this was, this was where it is. We are now in the process of our strategic planning. We haven't quite gotten to the stage where we are creating those department work plans. It might, it's very likely that department work plans will just incorporate equity. It may not be a standalone item. I'll let Antonio kind of talk a little bit about where staff is thinking that might, might work. But a lot of this work hasn't really been completed at the staff level yet. So it, providing review and feedback from this commission hasn't yet taken place. So the review and provide feedback on these two key areas was one of the major scopes and duties. Participating in the Equity and Inclusion Action Team, which that team is really designed to operationalize what's in those work plans. So again, hasn't quite happened yet. And then the third is where appropriate and where approved by council to participate and represent the city at events. So that, those are the, and then there's also the perform other duties.
Other duties, there's a sign.
Yes. So I'm just going to touch on this a little bit and then turn it over to Antonio. But really approach the work with the commission in a couple of key areas and starting with, with what you see here. And we're going to turn it over to Mr. Montez.
Yeah, appreciate y'all. Good evening. How are y'all doing?
All right.
Excellent, excellent. You know, I like to have a two-way conversation. So I appreciate y'all for entertaining us. So yeah, so I think Rebecca, I appreciate that. We really wanted to just call out that as we started to have conversations with the, the commission and start our meetings, we really felt we needed to take some time to lay a really solid foundation, not only with the team that was coming together that was brand new for the commission, but also for our organization and where we had been. So you see, that's the foundational building piece. We'll talk a bit more about that in a second here. Kind of following up on that and operational understanding. I think most residents know that things like plowing happens at the city and my parks are clear and I can play on safe parks. But there's other things that happen within the city that not everyone is aware of. So we wanted to take some time to talk about that and then get into some work planning conversations, right? So we're trying to find that direction on what would make the most sense. So you can move us forward. So as you can see on the slides here, Phase One really happened in September and through November. And that was some history and some background conversations. We spent time building some relationships with each other. Equity and inclusion work is about trust. So if you have trust and you can have relationship and be authentic in the way that you have conversations and not be worried about saying something that may not sit well with someone, but you have enough trust and relationship to have some hard conversations. So we've, we started there and have been continually doing that every time we get together. We spent some time reviewing the key work that the city has completed in our equity and inclusion work up until this point. So things like our government alliance on racial equity work that started, obviously the creation of my position, Equity and Inclusion Manager, Strategic Racial Equity Action Plan. So just taking some time to really go through those documents, understand where we're at as a city organization. Phase Two was December through January. We spent some time in the organizational review. So again, what do city departments do? What are they responsible for? What are some of the other commissions? And what are they doing in their work, right? So just kind of level setting some of those. And then we built a shared understanding of some key language, because when we say equity, we, like we all went through, we have to make sure we're saying the right thing. And not the right thing, but the same thing, right? It may mean something different to me than it does to you. So just understanding not only the shared language, but also some of the city initiatives. So we spent a lot of time with community aspirations and why that work is connected to the work that we're doing, right? So that would be the Phase Three, or the Phase Two, sorry. And then Phase Three, we spent, started in February. And I think we'll continue this over the next, of course, the next couple of months, is really trying to, trying to find that work plan that Rebecca alluded to. So you can give us the next slide. Thank you. And so as we started our work plan conversations, I think there's really three components that are all working together to help us get to where we're going to go on the other end of this conversation, right? So as we began our conversations, the commission reviewed the ordinance 1676 that created the commission. You all are well aware of that ordinance. So we started there to figure out, to Rebecca's point, what are we doing? We wanted to learn their strengths so that they could help us advance our equity and inclusion work, because naturally people show up with strengths that they're really good at and things that they would help us advance our equity and inclusion work. So we wanted to get a good understanding of that. And then we wanted to work together as a, a staff team to figure out what recommendations can we bring forward to pull in their strengths, to help us advance our equity and inclusion work that's really important here at the city in a meaningful way, not something that is kind of off to the side and/or kind of a check the box. We wanted something that they'd feel really good about since they volunteer their time to come have conversations with us. And then I think the last component that I would say is that you all, obviously, are a key part of this conversation, is that we need your direction to make sure that we're going down the right path in the way that we're doing our work. So I think that's the last piece there. And I'll just highlight, so some of the commissioner's strengths that we felt really would help us advance our equity and inclusion work was around data, like metrics and measurements, some strengths around accountability and transparency, and then community perspectives. And, and what I really appreciated about this after I sat with it and kind of thought about it was is these, these really align with the values that we've brought forward in, in our strategic plan, right? Around equity, integrity, accountability, things like that that we talked about, whether they made it into the plan or not officially. We talked a lot about a lot of values. And I think that you see that here in the strengths that they bring to the conversation. So really excited about that. So as we work to identify opportunities to partner in a meaningful way, I think what we've come up with for a recommendation is, is it seems like there's a natural alignment to partner with the Equity and Inclusion Commission on our strategic plan. As you all know, here's the draft. So we've identified some vision, mission, values, and we're working on success indicators and objectives. And I think that there's an opportunity to partner with the equity and inclusion on our department work plan. So what I'm presenting or proposing, what we're presenting or proposing, is a pilot project that would align the Equity and Inclusion Commission with the administration team. As we work through the department work plan, identifying tasks, metrics, and measurements to help us do our work as we move forward, we felt like that would be a really good spot to partner in and bring in their, their experience, their insights, their knowledge to help us do our work better, right? So to have that community perspective as a part of that. So, so that's that component. And we're not exactly sure, obviously, what that's going to look like, but I think we'll get there after we get some feedback from you all. And the next piece is, is so we use this often in our work around just engagement with community, which is the International Association of Public Participation, or IAP II scale, of public participation involvement. So I just wanted to throw this in there for folks that may be familiar or may not or may need a refresher. But we really see our partnership with the Equity and Inclusion Commission as we're doing some of this work to sit in the involve or collaborate space, right? As it makes sense, it may go between those. Maybe there's some consult, but we'll kind of move along this grid as we're talking about what makes sense for the work that we're looking to continue to move forward as we partner with them in a meaningful way.
Do you mind if I add something to the last, the last slide? So under the strategic plan, what we were thinking is, as I alluded to before, is we're looking to integrate equity, not just as a standalone, let's do this separately, but really have it as part of all of our operations. It's a kind of the way we think, the way we look at things, but really have an intentional focus to talk about inclusion, talk about how do we make programs more accessible, those types of things. And so ideally, the, the work of this commission would be looking at how do we apply that equity inclusion lens to our strategic plan? But because we're still in the middle of designing that strategic plan and developing it, we didn't want to go too big to start with, because this is a brand-new process and project, process for everybody. And so really looking at starting something small, similar to how maybe a, the Parks Commission may be reviewing some of the department work plans that are related to our strategic direction on parks and natural spaces. This would be a commission that's helping align the, the goal or the scope of that commission with our strategic plan of applying that equity inclusion lens to it. So we don't have the details yet simply because we haven't created our department work plans yet. But that's the alignment as what we're thinking. And then, did you have anything you'd like to add on this piece? Or should we just?
No, I think this was just kind of the question and answer, just the feedback for you all to be able to give us some insights and what your thoughts are.
And are we on the right path? Do you want something different? So that when, the plan is hopefully, I think it was maybe May-ish, is to come back with a work plan to present it to council that has more details in it. But right now, just needing some feedback and guidance on is this the direction that council feels would be appropriate?
When you say work plan, you mean the commission work plan?
Yes.
Not the department work plan.
Yes, there's lots of work plans out there. My apologies, the commission work plan, similar to how the other commissions present their annual work plan. That's, that's what we're thinking.
Got it, okay. So just a quick question. It appears twice, at least in the presentation, the department whoa?
Yeah, that's what all the kids are saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The whole department is saying it.
I was wondering about that.
Whoa, whoa.
Yes, yes. So.
Yeah, there it is.
There we go. I, I did want to just ask one question. And this is probably best for staff, maybe as opposed to the commission. So we had developed our Strategic Racial Equity Action Plan. And I've heard a lot of discussion about sort of the strategic plan being more covering sort of, having equity as a part of it rather than sort of this separate thing. Is the idea that maybe the SREAP sort of evolves into being more of an integral part of the, the strategic plan and, and work plans going forward?
I would say that's some conversations that we've had internally of how, what, what's the next step look like? We haven't had that conversation formally in any way, shape, or form. That's something that we've thought about, something that we didn't know that we were going to have this opportunity with a strategic plan coming forward. And so originally, I know that when, when Mr. Montez was hired, we had talked about doing kind of an SREAP 2.0. But then this opportunity to do the strategic plan came forward. So it might be, it, it might be natural to just incorporate equity. So when you're thinking about how do we accomplish this goal, instead of having a separate goal related to inclusion and equity, it's how do we accomplish this goal, thinking through what does equity and inclusion impact? Or how do we do that? So it's, it's a conversation I think we still have yet to, to have. But we have started talking about that.
No, and I think that gets to sort of that role that we had defined, which was to, you know, to be sort of the reviewer and commenter or, or, you know, provide insight on the, the SREAP. And if the SREAP sort of evolves into something else, we may have to adjust our thinking there. So I wanted to, to at least have an understanding of sort of the perspective that was coming through on that. So appreciate that. Other questions from the council? Councilmember Strong?
Thank you. So going back to B, the purpose and scope. I think this was initially the thought, and it was probably 2.0 from where the prior HRIEC had been. That was the one. One more. One more ahead. Mine are green, it's strong, yeah. Nope, the other way.
Other direction.
One more, stop. So in this model, we see the review and provide feedback. And it sounds like what you are proposing, and I think it seems acceptable, but kind of staying in that first box at this point, not moving forward to the participate or represent at this point?
Councilmember Strong, I think that it would go hand in hand a little bit because the Equity and Inclusion Action Team would get started after we've developed those department work plans, because the Equity and Inclusion Action Team is designed to help operationalize. So how do we actually make these things happen? So I think it would be something that would naturally follow, but maybe not be at the same time if I'm, does that make sense? Or do you have, I don't, I'm going to look at him.
No, I, I think yes. I think they'll go hand in hand, right? And I think the Equity and Inclusion Action Team is about helping build some capacity throughout the organization to help us do this work. I'm one person in a relatively large organization. So having folks that kind of sit with us and do this work pretty closely, but also bring in the lens of their individual departments to help us think about what does equity and inclusion look like in your space? Because that's different, right? What it looks like in parks is going to be different than what it looks like in fire and what it looks like in community development. So the hope is, is that we'll have representation from multiple folks from multiple levels of our organization that would be on that action team that then would support the work that you're talking about in the strategic plan so that it's embedded operationally and not necessarily, again, something that's kind of out on an island, because we know we have these core things that we have to do and that needs to get done. That's just a part of the services that we have to do. So how do we look at equity and inclusion as a part of that in place of it being something that's an add-on or an additional?
That explains. I thought you were implying that this particular commission was the Equity Inclusion Action Team?
No.
As an offshoot from that, but that makes sense that they're part of a larger organizational team that is cross-departmental. And then when you mentioned that it's within administration, which you know is near and dear to my heart, I just think there's a lot of room for the future. This is certainly not in the initial stages, but to even, when you say operationalize, job descriptions, making sure that those reflect an equity lens or any reviews where equity is built in as an expectation that, you know, have you represented for others? Have you taken another step? How could you have done something more? And I think really, that's where people don't see it as just this extra thing that's challenging and difficult, but really part of what makes us a better organization. So, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Councilmember Groff?
First of all, when I was reading through everything, I, it really helped me to get the perspective again and go back to where we started and where we've come to today. And it was really helpful to see that you'd gone through the SREEP with the new commissioners, with the GARE. It was a very much an educational process, in my opinion, and I thought that was very good, and it seemed to be very intentional to me. From that, I had one question about the, and the other thing is having it inclusive of all the departments, and each department is different, as you said, Mr. Montez. It's, it's important to think of how, how it fits in that department, how it fits in this one. They're not going to be a blanket one for, okay, this is the answer for everybody, and that's, I think, a good role for the commission to be aware of that and to work with the departments on that, that aspect. But I do wonder, now we are adding new members, so I'd like to know how we're going to get them up to speed with all this information that we've been spending some months getting the current members to, and do you have a plan for that?
Yeah, we're excited. We've talked a little about that. It'll be some work outside of the commission meetings, right, to get them up to speed. I don't want to slow down the work of the commission and with the momentum and the relationships that we built to say, hey, let's start all over again. So it'd be some one-on-ones and/or small groups, whatever works best for the new commissioners that come on board, to ensure that they get up to speed and get all the conversations that we've had.
Good, thank you.
Other comments, questions? Councilmember Bauer?
I'm glad you brought up working in smaller groups. Well, I guess I'll get that later. Following on what Councilmember Groff said, when you reviewed the SREEP, I actually watched that video and that, and also looking at the minutes. Are you comfortable with, and if I look at this, there's already been a handful of questions from council members if I look through all these minutes.
Or commission members?
Or, sorry, commission members, thank you. And so I'm wondering if the structure of this as a commission works. And you just noted that, you know, you want to get together with smaller groups and get them up to speed, but, you know, commissions are bound by open meeting laws. And I know in, back in June, when this was actually discussed, it was quite some debate amongst the council to figure out, should this be a commission? Should this be a committee? What should be on? And now we're also talking about reviewing, focusing on the SREEP. And I'm just wondering if we should also revisit as a council, does this make sense to continue this as a commission, or could they be more effective as a committee to allow this interaction that can happen in a committee form rather than, than a commission form? And so I, I think that's worth us investigating. We, with these new commission members coming on, this may be a challenge to get them up to speed, and we might just want to start with, I believe it was discussed, I believe it was against, against Councilmember Strong that stated, we want to set up this group for success. And, you know, one of the points of this check-in was to make sure that we had the right form for this commission, to make sure that the success was possible. I think it's an important thing for us to take a look at. You know, we could maybe evaluate looking at doing a, if you will, a crawl, walk, run kind of approach. And, you know, I wonder if we set, by making it a commission, you know, set the bar too high, you know, out of the gate to make this as effective and as beneficial as possible? Just thinking through, you know, discussions of going through the strategic plan, going through the SREEP and things like that, those can be done with the commissions. And looking at the minutes, you know, from the past meetings and looking at the videos of the past many meetings of the commission, I just don't see a whole lot of interaction from the commission. I see a lot more presentation from staff, which is fine, but if you look at our other commissions, it's much more about questions. Things like that. I expect that to change with new commission members, but it is a concern I have with this as a commission right now. And I'm just wondering if there's a better structure that would make it, allow it for it to be more successful and allow for it to work with the goals it still has in mind, not changing the goals.
And I don't know if that's something staff can respond to, but especially since it was kind of a question of the council, I think just first thought is that I get a little bit concerned about changing too many things at the same time because, you know, here we're adding new members, trying to get fully staffed up, so to speak, and, and I don't know that that's the right time to also change the, the type of group it is. So I, I would just say maybe we need to have that evaluation several months down the road after we have some more experience with the full commission. That's just my thought. I don't know other councilmembers. Councilmember Schroeder hasn't spoken yet.
Yes. Thank you. Actually, I, thank you for your comments, Commissioner Bauer. It's, I think what we knew from when we put this together that we would, it was evolving, and that we were, part of the reason we wanted to have check-ins and to talk it through is thinking, okay, is, you know, it's kind of like the decision tree. Is it working? Great. If it's not, well, then we need to do this. So I think you have some valid points about, you know, that we take a look at things. So I, you know, so yeah, I, I think we did, and that was one thing we all agreed on is that, you know, as we were moving along this path, that there might have to be some changes as we went. So when to do these things is, that's a, that's a difficult thing to do. And then also, you talked about utilizing the commissioner's strengths, and I, and maybe I was a little concerned about that because, right, the scope of the commission is stat, well, not static, but it's spelt out, and, and then your strengths of your commissioners are changing. And so, you know, as people come in or leave or whatever, and so I, could you speak a little bit more about what you meant by utilizing their strength, finding out what their strengths are and then utilizing them versus this is the work that we're tasked to do and then having people work on it?
It's a good question. I, I think for me, when I think about the initial call-out of what we were going to focus on, I don't know that we foresaw the opportunity that we have in front of us now with the strategic plan to maybe take a little bit of a different approach as we're thinking about impacting our organization around equity and inclusion. So when you see here the equity and inclusion work plans, that was a call-out because we didn't have the strategic work plan and/or like a formal way of doing work plans at department levels all the time in a predictable way. So that was a way that we knew we could say, hey, we're going to, we're going to center equity and inclusion work in a way that makes it like tangible and it's, it's out there, right? And I think when we have a strategic plan and an opportunity to change some of the initial ways of doing it, to your point, that was something that interests me. And, and when, when I say strengths, I, I hear what you're saying in terms of like when you get new commissioners, are you going to totally change your work plan and stop doing this? That's not my intent. My intent is to say we're working around data, we're working around metrics, we're working around some of the other, what's the other thing that folks call, uh, transparency and accountability, right? I think that those pieces will be things that we can kind of wrap around, and how do we get there or do something meaningful for them? That may change because the strategic plan work may last us a year, right? And then we'll need to figure out something else that we can do as a commission. So I don't, I don't foresee it being something that we would change regularly, but I think for folks that come in and volunteer their time and are really passionate about something, it's important to do work that they have skills and strengths and interest around instead of saying, hey, you're going to do this and you're not excited to do it, right? I think that's how we lose engagement from community, and, and, and something that's want to keep in mind. So I said a lot.
And let me just follow up on that because we had, why we had to evolve into this is because our one, they had some strengths, but it wasn't what that, that commission was supposed to do. And so they went off and did what they wanted to do versus what was tasked to them to do. So I'm a little concerned that people say, well, I don't want to do what you told me to do, this is what I wanted to instead, because this is what makes, I'm interested in. And it doesn't minimize what they're interested in, absolutely, for sure. I just want to make sure that it doesn't end up going off in a direction that isn't actually tasked in the commission. So that's where I'm concerned. If there is, you know, the, start going down a path, and of course, that'll be part of your job is to say that's not part of what you're tasked to do.
Yeah, that's fair.
Well, and I think there's a difference between strengths and interests sometimes, you know? I think the, the idea of trying to take advantage of people's strengths where they can focus on a particular part of the work is different than, than necessarily an interest that goes over here when the work is over here. So that, that would be maybe just a, a quick response to that. But I did want to get back to Councilmember Groff, perhaps in response to a prior conversation.
Well, I'm going to comment on a lot here because also we're, we changed the structure of the commission, so we have a work plan in place. It's very different. It's much more directed from the council than it was 20 years ago when I was on the Human Rights Commission. It's very, it's a different thing. Changing from a commission to a committee after five months is not at all what I had in mind. Commissions take a long time to get established. We've only had the commissioners on for five months, really. So I think to even have that conversation is way premature, in my opinion. I think that this is going to be at least a couple-year thing, process before we really have our feet on the ground with this type of thing. This isn't work that's like some of the other commissions. So I think that you have to understand that as a council member.
That's probably fair to say that the other commissions have all been working for years and years and years, and so it's a well-oiled machine.
Exactly.
We're not there yet with this commission. Councilmember Strong?
I agree with the mayor that if we change too many variables, how do you determine success? If you want to have an experiment, you can't change everything. We have to keep, have control. You can't see any change. You know, you can't really realistically measure something if, if nothing stays the same. And we are adding new commissioners. I think we need to consider the value of the members that we are having on the commission already for their time, their effort. And I appreciate the attention to detail that Mr. Montez is putting in making sure that there is a level set. And you need a base. You, you don't invite a whole bunch of brand-new people to your house and expect to have a successful event. You have to have the people that you know who know you and then build from there. You can't, you can't just start with a whole new staff in a day and expect that's going to be successful. And we just interviewed a whole cast of folks who are interested in being part of this valuable work, and for us to say now, oh, we're going to change that. I think it's really important and not to diminish being new. We've all been new on the council, but I think we had this conversation a number of months ago, and we chose by a majority of votes that we were moving forward as a commission, and I value that we continue that work so we see a constant throughout this and so we can see some kind of results. We've asked, we've told you what it is, it seems like you're on that path. It, it's going to take a couple of years for it probably to come to fruition, but hopefully we're going to see a lot greater success in what that product is when we did have it more loosey-goosey and we didn't know, and we didn't provide direction. That was constantly a concern where people were saying, I don't really know that you value what I'm doing, but we didn't always know what they were doing. And we've made it very clear, and so I think it's, it's rude to interview a bunch of people and then say, changed our mind. We need to have it be consistent as much as everything else. We need to be that level playing field, and we can't be the ones who keep changing our minds about what we're looking for, and we have to realize this is a long game. This is not a short, get it done. This isn't the kind of work that you would expect it to be. And I'd say that if we walk away from this now, I think we do a disservice to the people involved. And we send a message to our constituents that maybe we equally don't care about DEI, which we hear at a national level, and I guess we can make that decision, but I think I hear again and again that people want that, and the amount of people who applied to be on that commission proves that our city and our people want DEI part of what we're doing. And the mem, and the mayor even said during one of our meetings last week that we are not walking away from DEI, and I think we have to show that commitment by sticking with this.
Well, I just want to be clear, too. I don't think anybody's suggesting not sticking with this. I think that, that has not been suggested at all here. I think it's just, there are some questions about potentially how we move forward, so, and I don't want to speak for other people, but I, I did want to just note that, that may be a bit of a mischaracterization. Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, I follow that. I, I think that is a mischaracterization, what I was saying. I was basing what my comment was on, comment based on watching, I think I watched almost all, maybe two meetings in preparation for this of the Equity and Inclusion Commission, and just seeing how they were, that group was working and struggling in some cases and like the commission setup and the way that commissions have to work and function and whatnot. And it just brought to me, made me think like, this may be able to be more successful in a different form. That was the reason. It's not so much, you know, I didn't want to stop this or do it, completely the opposite. I was going based off council minutes for, you know, understanding why we're having this check-in, as I looked at that, and was to just make sure that they're having the success. And that's the lens I went into looking at those videos and seeing like, you know, is this the success? Are they having success? Do they have the tools, the structure, the direction, all those things necessary to achieve the goals that the council and the city set out at that time? And looking at it, I definitely saw some struggles. And looking at the minutes, too, you know, seeing some of the issues. I know in January, you know, we started talking about one thing and then it rambled into something, a different discussion, which is finding a committee but not so much an open meeting laws. And so questions, you know, things like that made me wonder like, is there a better structure? And do we just, you know, do we set it too high again out of the gate? You know, trying to build, like Councilmember Strong said, this is brand-new. It takes a long time to develop and to make these commissions work. I'm just wondering if there's a better way to incubate it first than later. I'm fine if we want to keep it as a commission, I don't have a problem with that. I was just trying to find the right vehicle and the right tools to provide them with the success that they can have. It's not to diminish or to lessen it or to suggest otherwise. Instead, it was the opposite, to make sure that it can succeed.
And I just, just to that point, I think that the challenge also that the new commissioners have is they've never been on a commission before. They may not completely understand all the, the things that we know about open meeting law and all that kind of stuff, which is fine. I think honestly, going off topic isn't necessarily a violation of open meeting law so much as it is just a, a need to have some conversational discipline that, that can be developed, a skill that can be developed over time. And I, and I think honestly, perhaps a, a lack of asking questions or, or conversation just can come from sort of being new to working together as a group and, and the, you know, the expectation and things like that. So I definitely understand that it may take some time for people to get more comfortable having conversations, and I'm sure that is something that Mr. Montez continues to work to, to foster, but sometimes people need to be drawn out and it doesn't always happen in the first or second or even fourth conversation. Sometimes it does take some, some time. And I think it, it's one area where, when I do the chair training for chairs and vice chairs once a year, one thing I try to emphasize is the role of the chair to make sure that everybody gets a chance to have, to be a part of the conversation, and if somebody isn't necessarily very active, that there's a way to try to bring them in. And certainly there's a staff role in that, and there's, there's definitely a leadership role in terms of the chair and vice chair. But it also takes a while to just kind of develop a working rapport. And so I'm, I certainly want to give that the benefit of the doubt and not, and not necessarily want to, to, to make too many changes necessarily yet. But I think we need to continue to pay attention and continue to be intentional about how we work, you know, with this group to make them as successful as they can be. One thing I've thought about is, is the notion for, and this probably applies to not just this commission, but any new commissioners, is to kind of, you know, attend another commission's meeting and see how they go. You know, Parks and Rec is always fun, so I always recommend that one, you know, because, because, and, and I hear P WET's pretty good, too, but, you know.
Hey, finance is fun.
So anyway.
I think the planning commission.
We've got, we've got a lot of opportunities. So, and that's something that can be helpful for somebody who's new to being a commissioner, whether or not it's this commission or anywhere else. And so there are those things that maybe we can, as an organization, continue to encourage people that are new appointments to, to, to learn the, the process and, and see how it works, you know, with the, with the well-oiled machine so that they can better integrate into it. And so that's, that's some thoughts I have. I know Councilmember Schroeder, you had some thoughts.
Yeah, and I, I just wanted to make a comment about the commission versus the committee. If I recall, Ms. Olson did a presentation on the, those two, and actually there were some great strengths for both of them. And so there was, so, so basically, it wasn't saying that one was better than the other because they both had strengths. So there was a, a consideration of possibly going to a committee as well.
It was definitely a back and forth.
Yes, it was definitely a back and forth. So, 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 I mean, to your point is, you know, looking back at her presentation or whatever, looking at the strengths and weaknesses, it would be, okay, is it still the best option or not? So I think to your point, and again, what is the best setup now that we've had a little bit? And that, and I think part of that might be, you know, maybe to go back and revisit that again, too. Maybe the two of you could look at that and see if that's something that makes sense or not. So anyways, I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, but I'm just saying it, it was quite back and forth, and I think it took a while for us to land on one. It wasn't like definitely one and definitely not the other. So, so I guess there, when we, as we're evolving, again, it's, always think of it as the lens that we're trying to figure out a better way to succeed versus just because we made this decision at a certain point, doesn't mean that as we get more information in that we can't improve it or change it. So, so again, you know, and I, and I take you, you know, what you said from the point of trying to be more successful versus any negative feelings on that. So, but thank you for just bringing that up because especially being a, a new council member, too, you didn't get to hear all that big debate back and forth, but again.
First, firsthand, yeah.
Yes, firsthand. So, so anyway, so, so I'm not, I'm not taken aback by this suggestion because, again, we were all, I think a number of us were on the fence on it at one time. Anyways, so anyways, thank you.
Right. I think staff had some thoughts, perhaps or questions.
Mayor, I'll let you finish your conversation. We're just looking for further direction on particularly next steps.
Yep. What, Councilmember Groff?
I think you're on the right track. I do remember the conversation about the committee and the, and the commission, and I was never in favor of committee. Committees are a lesser thing than a commission, and commissions have rules to them, they're in our code. It's a very different thing. To change this after five meetings would be very precipitous of us. I think that would be not appropriate. So I just want to make my, my point clear. I don't want to use staff time to go back and revisit commissions and, and committees and all those things. That just does not seem where we should be headed. We should be headed to do what they have been talking about and forming a work plan and forming our new commission. That's where we should be headed, not revisiting old things that we already discussed less than a year ago and voted on as a council. So I want to make my point very clear on that.
Appreciate it. Councilmember Strong?
I'd like to concur and also point out, it is not good use of staff time to revisit something, and a majority of the council at that time voted for this to be a commission. So it is not, maybe there was on the fence. I don't recall being on the fence about it. I recall being very firm that I felt this needed to, again, this is part of our code, and to, to say something less than that is, takes it, part of that away. And we voted a majority. So that means at least three people either sitting here now or, or not present, but three of us out of five said that that's what we wanted to do. And we, for us to change it now, because I get it, watched the shows, you watched the videos, you watched the, the meetings, but I don't know. I don't think, I feel like this is kind of like, we're, we're trying to change things in the middle when we just had all these folks who came for interviewing for something which now we are, we're, we're changing the job. And I think we should move forward. I appreciate the plan. I think the plan works well. It's a great step. We have to build the building blocks. You can't build a building without a foundation, and you need the foundation. So thank you for working on it. I'm sure there's a lot of group hugs when Antonio's around.
We may need to have one this evening. And I just want to say, I want to be, I want to be clear. So I think, I think, I think the five people, or the three people that, that voted for the commission versus committee are still on the council, they're sitting here. And, and my point isn't necessarily that, that like, or the point I don't think that was being made was that it was, that it was, that everybody was on the fence about it necessarily. It was a close vote, and there were very strong opinions on both sides of it. And I don't think that any of that, you know, it should be lessened by this. I think it's completely fair to ask the question. And so I don't think we, we should necessarily be, be, you know, going, going to extremes to, to question whether asking the question was even a good idea. But I think we did have the conversation, I think we did have the vote, and my point of view is that if we want to talk about changing the format, I, I don't think we're at a point yet where we really are knowledgeable enough to know whether we should or not. That's my perspective on it. You know, I think it's valid to say, let's keep, keep seeing how things go. If issues do arise, if things don't, you know, seem to be working the way we've got it set up, we should talk about making a change. I do know that I think, you know, some of the committees that we've had also, you know, they go up and down in terms of involvement, engagement, participation, and things like that. And so it, it's not the perfect solution either. We just have to keep trying to figure it out. And so I think our objective is to make sure we're continuing to set up our organization, these volunteer commissioners, and, and everything else for success. And, and we still have a lot of growth to do to get there because we're still, we don't even have the full commission yet. We're going to make some appointments here, and then hopefully we can, we can get to that point. I do see that our, our commission member does want to participate in the conversation, which we always encourage, your participation in the conversation. Come on up and, and have a seat, and, and please introduce yourself for the benefit of the public, and, and we'd love to hear from you.
So my name is Praj. I met, I think I met Councilman Groff, and Mayor, you interviewed me. I, I loved the conversation. I have a lot of thoughts, and I don't know, don't want to ramble. One, I think would be really helpful to define the scope of this commission, which, to be honest, as someone on the commission, I still don't know what the scope fully is. You, I also would like a little more clarification on, you know, your opinion on the meeting minutes, what happened in January, because again, I don't know like the exact rules of a commission, what's in scope and what's not in scope. So for me to, you know, be a better commission member, I would like to know like what you found wrong in January, because it would just give me better information going forward. Because I think the hard thing is, we're looking at, you know, Strategic racial Equity Action Plan, but equity inclusion is very, very broad, right? If you're on the Parks and Recreation Commission, your scope is parks and recreation. You'll understand the parks, how we do things in the park. Equity inclusion is everything, right? I mean, when I first came here, I saw we had the Economic Development Authority. Is that in our scope? Because I think housing is definitely very equity-involved. Is that something as we as a commission can discuss? I just feel like the clarity from City Council isn't very clear. So then, that's what's going to create, you know, whatever rambling happened in January, which I think could have been me because I was talking about something very specific there. I just don't know if that's in our scope or it's not in our scope, if that makes sense. Right?
Sure. And I guess, you know, maybe I'll, I'll start. So very much what this commission is about is, is looking at what the city does as it relates to equity inclusion. So that's everything from plowing streets to providing park services to, to the EDA, all those things. But it's really, you know, focused specifically on, on how equity and inclusion relate to the things that the city does. And so when we talked about the Strategic racial Equity Action Plan as one of the things to focus on, that was kind of how we as an organization had been defining what we do with respect to equity and inclusion. And we sort of set ourselves some, some small number of objectives and goals to try to be manageable and achieving those. I think now we've got the challenge of having just completed a, a strategic planning process which takes you to the 30,000-foot level and opens you up to kind of everything. And we've got to kind of, as an organization, we're not putting it all on this commission, believe me, get it down to some manageable things that we can do. And I think it would seem that the role of this commission would be to apply that equity lens to, to, as it was kind of talked about here, specifically the work plan of one of the departments as a starting point, and then maybe grow from there to look at more broadly at the rest of the organization. One of the conversations we had last year as we were establishing the commission was, you know, looking at each request for council action of, of a council meeting, you know, from equity point of view. And I think we all kind of realized that that could really bog down our process if, if the, the commission had to proactively review future requests for council action before they could come before the council. So the thought was maybe there's an opportunity to pick some of those over time and look back and, and have that as kind of the process with respect to those. But I don't think it's all completely yet defined, and I think that's an opportunity for the commission. It just has to be sort of in the perspective of, it can't be sort of necessarily bigger than the box of what the city does as its business, because that's what we're all here to, to deal with. So that's kind of the overarching framework for it. And then the, how it works is something that I think staff, the council, and the commission are going to have to be working through. And, and my perspective is that I would encourage all commission members, current and future, to continue to be willing to talk and to, to be part of the conversation, because we, the last thing we want is a commission that, you know, gets together and meets and nobody says anything. That's, that's not, that doesn't help the process. So I think that's, that's where I'm coming from anyway. Councilmember Bauer, you had some thoughts?
Well, I would just point, I did, curious if, concerned, I mean, did everyone in the ethics or the EIC go through ethics training? Or do we have?
Or new commissioner training?
New commissioner training or ethics training?
We, we did do a new commissioner training.
Including the ethics stuff. It's also coming up, I believe, in March.
Councilmember Bauer, the ethics training is once a year, and commission members attend it typically in April.
In April, yeah. So that'll be coming up, and that will help.
Yep.
Yeah, you can look at the minutes. It was not you.
Okay.
I, getting more clarification, I'm a little concerned in that, you know, it's been five months, we're still asking for knowing what the group, the commission does, and any clarification. That's fine. I wonder if it makes sense tonight to, you know, as a council, to give a little bit more direction to the commission, maybe direct more so, you know, work more on the Strategic racial Equity Action Plan and, you know, review that. And I'm still unclear what direction you're wanting from us, mainly because the, you know, we've given the scope in the charter, you know, we've had a lot of discussions and meetings. I wasn't on the council at the time, but there's a lot of discussions. So I'm still unclear what's confusing or what you're looking for as a commission.
I, I think it might be best, maybe that the council doesn't do that this evening, but rather, we have established the scope duties and functions through the ordinance. I think it might be appropriate for staff and the commission to work together and, and help develop those understandings, if that makes sense.
Mayor and councilmember, what I would suggest is, I think what the commission needs is what do you want them to focus on? Because as Commissioner stated, equity inclusion is so broad, even when you talk about our strategic plan, even if you're talking about administration. So do you want them to work on department work plans? And is that appropriate for them to dive into maybe one or two of the tasks that are in those department work plans? Or are you interested in them focusing on equity and inclusion in a different manner? Because that, we're just looking for some direction on where you want them to focus their efforts because of the broadness of the concepts.
Well, I think what was, from my perspective, what has been outlined this evening seems like a good walk step, or even maybe a crawl step, I'm not sure, you know, to, to start getting into it and figure some of these things out. Because I don't want to pretend that I've got, and, or that any of us have all the answers about that yet this evening either, because this is a new commission. I mean, we've, we've tried to define it as best we can in, in the scope duties and functions in the ordinance, but I don't know that tonight I'm prepared to say, do this or don't do that. I think I, I'm prepared to respond to what's been proposed here and say, sounds pretty good, let's give it a try, let's see how it goes, let's hear back how it went, and make adjustments as we go forward. I think that, that's my thought in that regard. And it sounded like kind of what I was hearing from at least some of the councilmembers. Councilmember Groff?
I would totally agree with the, the mayor on that. I understand your frustration a little bit on the scope. This is not unusual on this commission, but we try to make, what we're getting is a base right now. You're getting a base of information from Mr. Montez, a lot of educational part of it. You're going to have more of that because we're going to be getting other commission members up to speed. But at that point, I think at the same time, we're going to be getting a more specific work plan. And I think the work plan that was described in general tonight is the right one to go to. I think Mr. Montez and Ms. Olson are exactly on, on the right course there. So I think lean on them a little bit for further information on that. At least from my perspective, I support both of you in that, that mission. And then we'll review this after a few more months, maybe let the new members have five months, two, to get adjusted to it. I would also say, do any work you can outside of the commission meeting. Maybe familiarize yourself with other things that have been done with the city or what other cities are doing. We're not the only city that's working with this information. So, so put in some time with that, and that might help you come with some other ideas.
No, for sure. And I understand your concern specifically, because sometimes, I'll be honest, Antonio, like, I feel like it is not as much of a conversation versus you just giving us like a speech on what you're doing as your main job, and I think that's a fair concern. But I think the issue that equity inclusion is just so broad, so for us to do really good work is just tough. But again, Rome wasn't built in a day, right? Like you mentioned, the commission was made five months ago. We're still, we're going to get new members now, so we're still on that path of what exactly do we want to accomplish? But, you know, I definitely have taken time. I just met with David Rosenthal, the fire chief, last week. I met with Erica Scheider. Because I don't know how a city runs. I don't think any new commissioner, even city councilman, when they first joined, knew everything about the city, right? I didn't know Roseville, you know, firefighters had 24-hour shifts. I didn't know how EMS services worked. I didn't, you know, know anything. And until I exposed myself to that, now the commissioners expose themselves to that, I think it's hard to, again, define that scope, this is exactly what we're going to do, which is why it takes time.
You're doing the right thing.
Wait, Councilmember Strong?
I know personally, in my own work, sometimes it's helpful to have a large-scale goal and a small-scale goal. And so maybe it would be appropriate, as we look at these big-scale goals, to take a little chunk out of it and look at it and go, maybe it is time to, hey, look at these, here's what we want to do with our work plans, and it's this big ethereal thing. But also, here's a job description where we've really had a hard time having people of color apply for the position. What ideas do you have about how it's worded? Like maybe if you mixed a couple different type of approaches, it would bring some practicality into what you're doing on a large scale into like that day-to-day, and here's how you're going to help. We're doing this so later we can do this. And I don't know, maybe that would be helpful. That's how my brain thinks, but I have, all day long, I have the big things happening, but I got to keep the little things going underneath. And I don't know, maybe that would help, just see where that focus is and why it's important to have that big goal and help us create what that big goal is so that when we look at those little seemingly mundane tasks, you know how your work is impacting what we're doing.
And I think that's exactly what Antonio and Rebecca were getting at with, maybe take a look at one department's work plan that comes out of the strategic plan and perhaps pieces of that and not the whole thing, depending on how you want to do that, and make that, you know, a manageable-sized thing to kind of have the conversation about and develop some, some institutional, you know, strength and muscle memory about this that can then be applied to maybe a little more broader thing to look at or, or other, or other aspects of, of how the city does business. So, you know, I think the thing, the thing we don't necessarily want you to have to do as a commission is to try to figure this all out yourselves. You know, I think it, it's important to have a guided process, and I think that's what your, your staff liaison and Ms. Olson are all about, is making sure that, that it's manageable for everyone, because it's got to be manageable for the organization, too. You know, otherwise, we're just setting ourselves up for, for trouble.
I have one last thing. I am so glad you came here tonight, because that was one thing when they were going to give us the update, that was one thing I mentioned to the city manager and stuff, was needing a representative from actually one of the commissioners. And so I'm not just, nothing against the staff, because you guys do a good job. It just, I really wanted to hear your voice, too. So thank you for coming and, and coming to the table and actually, and I think this is maybe part of what Commissioner Bauer was getting at, is having that, your voice heard and interact like that. That's exactly what we need, so thank you for being here.
All right.
So can I summarize next steps so that we are all on the same page? So what we will do from the staff perspective is, we will have their work plan, they'll start working on creating some kind of work plan that's tied to our strategic, our strategic plan. Unfortunately, we don't have our department work plans yet, so it may be postponed a month or two, because we, we're, I know we're meeting this week to start those conversations. With that, then, the next step will be, they'll do some work. Based on the timing of that, the, the commission will then come back to council to present a more detailed work plan, May, maybe June, depending on when those work plans get finalized. And then you guys can provide a little bit more further direction if that's on where they want to go. And then moving on from there, then they can start working on the, the details of that work plan. Does that capture what we're at? And in the meantime, we'll be onboarding the new commissioners, getting them up to speed, all that sort of stuff.
That timing may work with a, a joint meeting, too. I don't know.
Oh, yeah. I think that would be when the, when the work plan comes.
Yes, yes. That would be the work. The, the commission would come forward and they would present their work plan to you, not staff.
Right. Right. Yep.
Great.
And so, and just the last thing I'll say is, is, you know, I've, I think I've said it before, but this is new, it's new to everybody involved, and I think it's just a matter of, you know, being, having the patience to figure it out and not, not, not getting so overwhelmed by the big-picture thing that, that, you know, that the commission can't get work done on some smaller tasks, as was talked about, because I think that's important as well. Certainly, this, this, you know, this is a subject matter that has, as you've said, very broad applicability society-wide. You know, it would be great if, if you seven people could solve all those problems in two months. You know, wonderful. But, but the reality is, I think, you know, that's why we want to have the focus on the city's operations, the city's business, how the city takes into account equity and inclusion in doing our business, and developing some, some achievable tasks and steps to build the capacity to, to, to do more in, in future, you know? So that's, I think, makes sense.
So regarding the ordinance and like the scope, how would scope like expand it? So I know obviously, right now, we're focused on the department work plans as we onboard them. But like, you know, I definitely have equity inclusion, especially, you know, we're talking about homelessness and housing and affordability. I don't know if that's specifically in the equity inclusion ordinance, but is that something then we have to come with, for you to have approval on top, to be something to discuss? Or is that something we can expand within our commission? Because we can say, oh, well, we want equity in housing.
Well, I think, I think the city has plans and objectives in homelessness or housing. And to the extent that there, there needs to be an equity lens applied to maybe propose new policies or something like that, that may be an opportunity for the commission to weigh in. I don't think that we're expecting the commission to say, sort of broadly, the city should, should focus on homelessness, because that's an issue of equity. I think we are already sort of focusing on homeless. You've seen a lot of that in discussions, and certainly learning more with the departments. So it's not the commission necessarily role to, to, to sort of say the city necessarily, I have to put that qualifier on it, you know, should be focusing on this or that. Because I think that could, that could be too big of a thing to try to, try to deal with. But, but I think to the extent the city has, perhaps either has or is thinking about new policies or programs in relation to certain areas of focus, there may be an appropriate opportunity for the commission to weigh in on equity and inclusion as it relates to that. That's, I guess, maybe how I would explain that.
And to the mayor's point, I would say that that would probably fall under a department work plan, under a couple of different departments. However, because we're starting small, that might not be within that scope right now. But my guess is, the city is setting priorities, they're setting their strategic direction, they're setting the goals and objectives and success. And from there, based on that, each department will create their work plan so that they can achieve those goals. Those types of conversations would happen within the departments that have more focus on housing. So we can talk more a little bit later.
And certainly, it doesn't mean just because the focus is on the admin department to start with, and maybe parts of that plan to start with, that at some point, as, as the commission gets more, you know, experience, that those other things may, may not come into it. So, you know, I think that's to be part of it. All right. I think that wraps up our discussion here. We appreciate, once again, you being here this evening, as well as Antonio and Rebecca. And I do want to just check with the council, we're about a half hour past our typical break time. We've got some more business to attend to. So why don't we take about a five-minute break?
It is a large park. It is designated a community park, meaning that we draw from more than just that neighborhood in our Parks and Recreation System Master Plan. And although it is on that corner and can be accessed by pedestrians from that corner, by vehicle, you do have to come through Fry Street back here. So that's part of the conversation. Superintendent Taylor is going to talk a little bit about, just briefly summarize why we have these capital needs coming, and then we'll start talking about our engagement and our proposed plan.
Okay, so a little bit about Rosebrook. As you can see here, we do have the waiting pools. We've talked about today. There's two lit tennis courts there, as well as two are only two lit soccer fields. We do have the playground that's orientation is behind the building right now. And then we'll kind of get into each of these here on the next slide on why we're here today. So first, you know, we didn't have the, we talked a little bit about the playground down there. Playground was built in 2000. It was initially scheduled for a replacement in 2021. We deferred that for a variety of reasons. Some was just capacity, some was because we knew these conversations were going to happen in the next couple of years. We wanted to make sure we wouldn't put in ourselves in kind of a box from a standpoint of the site as a whole. About the pool, the pool is our, the city's only water feature. It was built somewhere in the 1970s. I don't know the exact date. I don't know if we've ever been able to really narrow that down. Sure, we could ask some people and we'd be able to find out. But many of the parts on that, that pool are original. In 2009 and 2016, we did major patchwork on that, on the deck and the surface of the pool. That's now failing, and it's beyond a repair type situation. It needs to be redone. Those cracks are coming back. The sand filters on the far right-hand side, it's an outdated filtration system. It's original to the, to the pool. It's been discontinued for years. We, if something goes wrong on it, it's very hard to find parts. Eventually, my staff will find something on eBay or something that's been used, and we're able to kind of retrofit it onto the site. But we're really one major kind of breakdown from not having the water feature at this point with the system that we have. So as you can see, the, it's been all the way back to the 2010 Systems Master Plan. It's been proposed to have a splash pad here at Rosebrook Park. The layout's a little different, and we'll talk about that based on when we put the park building in as part of the renewal in 2014. But it's been something that's been discussed since 2010, kind of converting that waiting pool over to a splash pad. So a little bit about why splash pad versus waiting pool. Splash pads are our most common requested amenity. It's not something we have in the community. Splash pads are more inclusive and accessible than the pool, especially in our current state. Our, in our current state, our pool would not be accessible. We wouldn't be able to build the pool in the, in the capacity it is now because there's a zero entry requirement. So one way or another, we'd be changing over. Less drowning risk with splash pads. There is a concern, you know, from our end that we do have standing water, a foot and a half deep, and it's, it's a non, you know, no lifeguard on duty type situation. Was considered for Rosebrook in the Park Systems Master Plan. We talked about that. Splash pads typically span a greater age range than the waiting pool. Right now, our waiting pool is for fairly young children and families, and a splash pad would kind of broaden that a little bit for us. And the splash pad itself will cost about 50% the cost of the waiting pool, which we'll talk about as we get a little farther into this. So our current layout is, the playground is, I'll start at the parking lot because you had the cursor there. So parking lot has eight spots, not adequate for what goes on at that park between the tennis courts and the, and the building is very busy with rentals and the waiting pool and the soccer fields and everything else. So the eight spots that are on that side of the, the park are not adequate for what's going on there. We have the waiting pool we talked about. The current orientation of the playground is directly behind the building. And then we have some green space that's open behind the playground. So if we go to the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about what that concept idea would be, and Matt will get a little deeper into as we talk a little bit about what we're proposing here today. So we're proposing to expand the parking lot. We believe we can add about 35 stalls to that. So making it over 40 stalls in that area, which will take some pressure off the rentals itself, take it off Fry Street, and just kind of spread that parking a little more into the park where we'd want it. We're proposing to move the splash pad behind the building in the current spot of the playground, and then move the playground just to the east and some open green space that's there. We think this is a better use of the overall space. We can really make that splash pad and playground kind of feel like one unit instead of two separate projects. If we could do them together next to each other, maybe by some theming and some other things, color scheme. We just think that the layout of this will work a little better.
So that takes us to about where we were last time we were here. And again, I thought it was important. It's been about a year to lay that groundwork. But when we left our council meeting, one of the key things that, that came from that conversation was, this sounds like a pretty good idea. Obviously, we want to engage the neighborhood. That was always part of the plan. But while we're talking, we should identify are there other things. This is really an opportunity to touch this park and to leave and feel pretty good about the work that we did there. So we began the process like we always do with a community meeting. We sent out about 500 invitations. I will note that we were in very intentional to send a specific invitation to the multifamily housing across Snelling, knowing again, making sure that we're trying to be intentional about the equity impacts of a project like this. We did have 17 residents attend, which is, that sounds like a low hit rate. It's actually pretty good for a community meeting. And they were, it was a really, really fantastic meeting. I love this format. A lot of very good conversations. We did some dot charts. And some of the themes that came from it was general excitement about the idea of a splash pad. People like that. People who, even if they don't have kids of their own, their grandkids like it. They seem to be very excited about that idea. However, there was some concern about, is that going to bring more people into the neighborhood and exacerbate the parking issues? There was some nostalgia related to the pool, and that's their word, not ours. People talked about their kids swimming in that pool, their grandkids swimming in that pool. I can relate. My kids swam in that pool when they were tiny as well. But I, at that meeting, there was a general understanding of looking at the site holistically and an opportunity to move forward to meet a need, and there was not strong opposition to what we were proposing. There was some ask to look at, is there a way to do both? And we said, yep, we'll look into it. But really, complete understanding and significant amount of agreement with what we were proposing moving forward. In terms of other things, and this, this is one of the many charts we had. It's not really meant to be shown, other than to show that we, that there was engagement. We did hear about a couple of other things that the neighborhood was interested in. One that I think surprised us is we have about a quarter mile loop around the park. And maybe it's because we met December 17th, which is about the shortest day of the year. But we heard a lot about people using that site year-round for exercise. And I think this is in line with one of the trends we're seeing in recreation. People want to be out at their house year-round. They want to be walking. They want to do what we would refer to as passive uses. And you can only do that in Minnesota when it's light out if we don't have lights there. So they talked a lot about adding trail lighting around the rim of the park. And the other point that they talked about, and I'll have another slide that shows this a little bit better, is there is a bus stop up here on Snelling and Sea, and this pathway comes down and all the way over to near Rosedale. So they said there's a lot of pedestrian traffic, and it's pretty darn dark and sometimes dangerous over there. So there was a, that was a really big desire and felt sort of like low-ish hanging fruit that we could try to tackle to really show the community that we heard them. Another piece that we heard about is a desire, and it won't surprise this council, for more parking. They love the idea of more parking by the building, but also mentioned near the soccer fields. When there's soccer games going on, it is just a busy, busy place, and wanted us to pursue more parking there. So we walked away feeling pretty good about it. But again, mentioning, knowing that it was a community park, we wanted to make sure that our engagement went broader than just that one meeting and touched the broader community. So we did put together a Survey Monkey, community survey that we put out, both with signage at the building, through some news updates. We ended up receiving 104 responses to it, and I'd say it succeeded. We found that 58% of the respondents were one to three miles away from the park. So it got us outside that inner neighborhood. Another 25% more were four to six miles. So the bulk of the respondents were a little further away, but they did report to using the park generally about once a month, the majority said. What we didn't potentially anticipate is, when you use a survey, you tend to have louder voices that are in opposition than are in support. And so what we did find is, I would say a major, well, there was a majority of respondents said they would prefer to have a waiting pool rather than a splash pad. The limitations of a text survey doesn't allow you to explain or talk about the whole proposal. It wasn't exactly framed as to what would you prefer, but, but not too much more complex than that. Other things that we heard, the playground, universally, they felt that needs to be replaced. It's in dire need of it. And frankly, we did hear, for a system that has about 96% positive ratings in our community survey, we got much lower than that. I think it was about 72% positive ratings of that park, which leads us to believe we waited too long to do this. We, we need to get this done. We need to be up to that 96%. People feeling good about that park. So we know we have work to do. From those that live further away, we had less interest in the parking issue and less interest in the lighting issue. I think those, you can kind of figure out why. The third way that we tried to engage in this was very intentional was through our Discover Your Parks series. I see some nods. Most of you are out at these events. We have our red tablecloth, and it's either myself, Kerry, one of our superintendents, and usually our commissioners at the tables. So in addition to hawking our various fantastic programs, and how much fun it is to be on the Parks and Recreation Commission, they also, we'll talk about whatever our hot issues are. So we had flyers made for this, knowing this was going to be an issue we needed feedback on, and had a lot of one-on-one conversations. Again, we found that in those conversations, about three to one supported what we were doing. And even those that said, oh, it would be a bummer to lose that pool, understood. And we didn't get a strong passion against what we were proposing. So that was really the crux of the engagement that was put in. And that brought us to all of these different options, because when you say, tell us what you want us to do, they say a lot of things. First and foremost was, I've got my, was the splash pad, splash pad versus waiting pool. We did realize after we left that we needed to have better information on what the cost of a waiting pool is, and really make sure that we, what we were saying was accurate. So we did have a company actually do a quote for us on what a waiting pool replacement would be. And depending on the bells and whistles, they came in with about a $1.3 million quote. And then we, we thought maybe we could value engineer that down to somewhere around $1 million. But you're talking about doing things like reusing fencing, and I don't know that that's going to leave the park the way we want to leave it when we're done. But could be an option. Splash pad, we, we really doubled down, had some conversations with actually multiple vendors about splash pads. We do believe that we can do a recirculating system, so one in which the water does not just pump down the drain, but is actually chlorinated and keeps going through for about $500,000. And we think that it can be appropriate for this space. One thing that will definitely be threading the needle is we don't want to build the biggest and best value fair water park here, because we're going to exacerbate the parking issue. But we know that some neighbors will be bummed about the loss of the waiting pool. So we don't want to put one sprinkler up and say, here's your splash pad. So we're going to have our work cut out for us if we do that, to really thread that needle. The other piece that we looked more, well, we looked more intensely at all of this as we sort of brought our plan together. But the playground, there are some flooding issues there. We refined those numbers. There also lacks concrete curbing, which is our new standard. So we do think around $200,000 would really do a playground that's similar in play value to what's there, but updated along the lines of what we've done over the last 10 years in our system. Pathway lighting, conservatively, $70,000, we think, would do everything on the south, east, and north side. The residents did say that they felt the west side because their street lighting over there was, was pretty good. We'd obviously, if we went through with it, get a quote on doing the whole loop and trying to decide what made the most sense. But we conservatively think we can do that for about $70,000. The parking, these are the numbers that'll take your breath away a little bit. The parking where the pool is would be about $200,000. That's an engineer's estimate at this point in the game. But you do have to remember that there would be demo work involved with the pool there, and you're taking a site that mostly doesn't have parking and creating new parking. So it's not a, not an easy thing to do, but it is an opportunity where you're, theoretically, if we were to move forward with the splash pad here, you got to do something with that space. Parking seems to make a lot of sense and might be worth that investment. We also looked at parking on the north side. This is the number that surprised us the most, because we found out that there's an extreme number of utilities underneath that area and also stormwater. So if we were to add parking in there, we estimate that probably in the neighborhood of $300,000 by the time we're done with that. The other hard truth about parking, and you're all tired of hearing me say it, is people always want parking, and I understand why. But you have to be mindful that once you take out green space to put in parking, you never get that green space back. So although we want to accommodate those parking needs, we do want to be thoughtful about not building vast swaths of pavement in line with our sustainability goals as well. We did also hear at both the neighborhood meeting and from some of the soccer players in the survey, that our soccer fields, this was no surprise to us, are quite wet and definitely in some need of repairs. If you look across Snelling from this park, you see wetlands. That's not because there was a magic barrier and this park was not wetlands. It's because this park was at one time wetlands and is reverting to being wetlands. The fields were flat. They were not specifically crowned, which means over time, you get what's called a bowling effect, where people play gets lower, the edges stay high, and it forms a bathtub. So when it rains, those fields are slow to dry. They do need to be addressed at some point, whether it's a part of this project or not. We looked at. We did get, again, I would say, a conservative quote, where you could do both, re-crowned and sodded for $170,000. Could be a part of this, but what I'll talk about on my next slide is maybe sequentially, it makes more sense doing down the line a little bit, so we're not being so disruptive. The last piece, and Councilmember Bauer sent an email, and I think he caught it astutely. We pulled this all together, and we talked to the commission, and we have our nice little squares on the, on the plan here. And what we ended up thinking about is, I want to make sure that if and when we do this, it still feels like one cohesive park. And so Jim and I can go out, and we can get a splash pad vendor, and we can get a playground vendor, and a parking lot maker, we'll call it that. And they will, they will do their part. But I want to make sure that when we leave, it feels intentional. It feels like it's been planned out. So we have high-quality construction documents. We have high-quality landscaping. And so what we're proposing is working with LHB, who did the fantastic design out at Sunset Park, the one that everybody said is too small and won't work as a park, and has now come together and worked very well. And they are doing an hourly quote that they estimated at $19,000. Historically, we've come in well under that when we've worked with them, and I would anticipate we'd do that. And I think when you're doing, talking about the number of different components that we're proposing today, I, I'd hate to leave and have it feel like, like the squares on the map. I don't think that's what we want to be doing. So with all of that, we have to make some choices, and we recognize that. So what we're proposing to do today is put in a splash pad and remove the waiting pool. I want to be very transparent. There will be hard feelings about that. If I thought, there's nothing I love more than coming and saying, we've got this all figured out, and everybody's going to say we're the best and we love you. And there will be some bumps along the road if we go forward in this way. But we do think it's the most financially prudent thing to do. We think it is a demand that we can meet for the community and ultimately makes the most sense for the site in the long run. We also look at, then, once you pull out that waiting pool, as I mentioned, adding parking here can really address the single biggest need that we've been hearing, which is the lack of parking near the building, and generally, a lack of parking on-site. We can update that playground, put in a great new playground, and we can add trail lights for a somewhat reasonable amount of money, again, to meet that very tangible need that we heard from the community. At this point, I would recommend that we don't move forward with the north parking. I think that's just a high amount of money. It is a loss of green space. It still could be done at a future date. Nothing that we're saying right now would preclude that from being done. But it just seems like it's a little bit beyond the scope of what we're trying to do. And when we talk about incremental change, that might make more sense. The other one that we really went back and forth on is, is would we try to do the soccer fields now at once or do them down the line? I, I think we're probably 55, 45 on saying what makes the most sense is programming that into the CIP and doing them a couple years down the line. This will allow us to work with our, our users, the soccer association, and say, you know, maybe in 2027, we're going to have one field out in 2028. We're going to have one field out, so that they know it's coming, and we can work together on that. But there, there's a counterargument to just say, just get it all done and move out. But I, I think at this point, we're not recommending moving forward. Also, being mindful of the pocketbook impact. So all of this comes together, and I swear, as much as you hear me, I did not plan it to come in. And I actually called Jim when it all added up, and I said, Jim, we got to find another $1,000. I feel like a car salesman. However, we ended up at an estimate, and these are engineer estimates, at $999,000. We currently have programmed $730,000 within the CIP that can be utilized to cover these expenses. And then what we are proposing, which is still what we talked about, would be utilizing park dedication for that remaining difference. As a reminder, park dedication funds do need to be used to expand amenities to offset the impacts of development on a new park. We did receive some of those park dedication funds for the development that is right here on my south side. And then off the map to the north, we also did receive park dedication funds for those apartments. So this would be an appropriate use for those park dedication funds. It also is worth noting, and as we know, all sorts of third-party funding is very much up in the air right now. But we did put in an application for a community resiliency grant that could help fund the use of a reuse system instead of one that just pumps water down the drain, and also adds some shade structures. But ultimately, as far as we're concerned, would reduce the city's impact if we were to get that grant. So all of that is to say, that's what we're proposing moving forward with funding-wise. And then in terms of schedule-wise, I'm going to gloss over this a little bit, except for to let you know that our plan would be to begin with the site planning, if, if the council's in favor of moving forward. We'd really begin with that right away. We'd also issue RFPs, so we can get a playground and splash pad vendor involved early, so they can participate in the community engagement with us. This summer, we would do our community engagement with that narrow scope of saying, we are going to do a splash pad, we are going to do a playground, but we want to hear from you, what you want that to look like. What are the different sorts of sprinklers? What sort of play amenities would you want in that? But at this point, we're proposing really taking off the table the pool versus splash pad conversation. We're hopeful, then, that if we do that, the pool closes Labor Day. We, our hope that we'll be able to do some preliminary construction right after Labor Day. Probably, the bulk of it would have to be done next spring. Without having a vendor in line, I'm very hesitant to, on a public forum, say I have a date. But I still would hope that we would have some opportunity for water features next year. But I think we'd have to learn more from our vendors as we move forward. We do anticipate that in the engagement process for the design, it would be at the collaborate level, where we would be hearing from the community, and they'd really be telling us what they want in it. And again, we've been pretty intentional in how we've engaged to this point. So what we certainly are proposing as a staff side is pretty clearly what I've laid out here, and I think that we vetted that out and feel pretty strongly about that. There are other options. One is we could simply put out the waiting pool to bid, and when that number comes back, I can come back and say, hey, this costs what it is. Do we want to do it? And of course, the third option is to continue to talk to residents and see if we can find a happy median. I will caution, I'm not sure that there is one in this case. I think there's a lot of strong feelings on both sides. But I do think this is the best way to move forward. So with that, I'll go back to this one, which might be the easiest slide, but I am happy to answer any questions, receive any feedback, or anything else that would please you. Thank you, council.
All right. Thank you for the presentation and all the work that's gone to getting to this point. Questions from the council? Councilmember Strong?
Thank you. So the property to the south of the red parking, the south parking, that has been recently purchased, right?
Yep.
As a multifamily unit. Has anything happened there?
They are, they've done work on the site. I should, yeah, I think they've, they've moved dirt, and they, they have, if memory serves, they've done the subdivision. So something will happen, but I don't know how far along they are.
Sure. So do you know if the tree cover stays, is similar to what it is there now?
The, the evergreen trees that are on the south side are city trees.
Okay.
We have some concern about the impact anytime there's earth move, but we did go out and inspect them, and we do think they're going to be okay. We do know there will be some trees impacted if we were to do the parking. I think we estimated five trees. Three are ash, if memory serves, Jim, which we're, you know, sort of moving on from anyways. I think one's a silver maple, and one is a high-quality tree that we would hate to lose. But yes.
There's one additional ash over by the splash pad we would remove as well, just because it's, we don't want all the leaves dropping right on the splash pad constantly either, so.
Right. Has there been any consideration to community gardens? Because I know that was another high. Is there anywhere that, that, I know I saw the note said volleyball space.
Yeah.
But that, I don't know, is that too shaded to consider community gardening there?
So I don't know that it's too shaded. The one piece of feedback that we did get from the neighborhood, and I think I teased it out as a bullet, but didn't verbally share it. They wanted to be conscious of making sure we didn't program every inch of the park, because there's a lot of informal activity that goes on. So we do know that by adding pavement, which we'll do with the parking, we're going to have to treat stormwater somewhere. So we're already going to impact that. Community gardens were listed as part of a concept plan. I don't know for sure that we have a site for it now, but it's something we could keep in mind in the long run. We're not totally ready to announce it publicly, but we are working on some additional community gardens, not in this area, but over on 88, where we've just procured some rights to. And we are pretty close to locking that up and being able to share that information as well. So we are working on that. I just don't know that this is the site for it.
Sure. And then, do you know, is Rosebrook going to be one of the parks that has Discover Your Parks this year?
It is. And that would be, that would be one of our engagement pieces. Yep.
It's too bad it's not next year, though, when it's all done.
Well, we might go back. You don't know. We do like to do that, so.
Yeah. No, that's good to know, because I think.
But we, and again, I buzzed through it, but we do envision that being one of our engagement steps. So we'll begin with an initial meeting, and then we'll hold a Discover Your Parks, and then probably a concept plan that worked really well this year at Lexington Park, so.
Perfect. And then I'd just like to reiterate, as you mentioned, as someone who went to a lot of the envisioned Discover Your Parks, you know, I'm a pretty regular attendee, as some of us are, that the interest in the splash pads across was so, so prevalent, no matter which park you were at, somebody mentioned it. So I mean, there is a lot of interest citywide, maybe not as much in this particular space, but a lot of interest at other parks.
Yep.
Other questions? Councilmember Bauer?
I would second what Councilmember Strong said about splash pads. My informal phone calls of, like, neighbors' children, my parents are too old now, but having raised my kids across the street from a splash pad, they're just godsons for a little once. And everyone that we talk, I talk to, children and parents both wanted a splash pad. They were quite excited about that. I do have a question about the, a couple of questions about the soccer field.
Yeah.
Those currently are lit. What condition are the lights, the field lights that we have right now? Is that something that we need to consider?
They're, they're high quality. Over time, they could be considered for LED, but they're, they're effective. They're also remote operated, which is great. So we did invest, I guess, I'm aging myself, getting to 10 years ago with the renewal program, we did invest in some upgrades to those. So those, those still function very well. Over time, all of our lights should go over to LED, but I think that's a down-the-line type conversation.
It's something, yes.
Yeah. We don't have any eminence of failure or anything like that, so.
And I agree with deferring the parking in the soccer fields. One thing that I will say as someone whose child is in way too much soccer, is there is definitely a shortage of indoor soccer space.
Yep.
Domes are quite expensive, so, but it would be interesting to see if the numbers work. I also know domes charge an insane amount of money per hour, and they're utilized always.
Yep.
Possible if the numbers work. And we'd encourage you at that future time to look in your budget and see if the numbers could work or something like that.
Yeah. I think that's definitely not, although you're right, there's sticker shock on the front end. It's, it's a conversation certainly Jim and I and the staff have had that if we were to do turf and potentially a dome, this would be a site. But that's a whole nother conversation, as you said.
Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Graff?
Thanks for the presentation. Great job, as always. I think adding the trail lighting is smart. I think that's a good thing to do. I think you're right about, just think of all the walkers in Central Park. I mean, this could be a neighborhood one that would add into that, that in our, our park program. And having it near a bus stop, I'm glad they point, the residents pointed that out. That was smart. I wasn't even thinking of that part of it. That parking, is there parking on the north side? It looks like there is.
There is. Yep.
How many spaces are there?
I think there's 35.
35, and then that, that potential would be 43 additional, if we were to do that north parking lot, which we're not recommending. But there's 35 spaces currently there.
And with the south, there's another 35. So we'd have about 70 total.
Correct.
Correct. Yep.
I know that, at least from door knocking, and I haven't done it for a couple of years, that was an issue for people along that street and around the corner, is that when there are soccer games or things, they said it really gets parked up a lot. So I think having that, that'll help with some of the neighbors.
We hope it'll relieve some. I don't want to oversell it, because I, I do think that there'll still be some. But yes.
Whatever the closest path is from parking to the field is where people are going to park.
I remember in our conversation last year, definitely, the, the north parking lot may not be completely fully utilized when the street is full of cars even, you know.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah. Because it's, it's, it's often, yeah, off the beaten path. And the direct path to the field is right from the street, so, yeah.
And I think hiring the site plan is smart. I think that's, you know, this is a big investment for the community. And I think spending that money to make sure we're doing it correctly and that we haven't missed any ideas here is an important thing. The one last thing is about the recirculation of the water. And I don't know if this works on a park system, but I know that for swimming pools now, they're moving more towards salt water treatment rather than to doing chlorinated. And the people that I know have changed their pools, say that it's a lot easier on the skin and eyes and all that.
So, yeah, we've explored all options with this. I think originally, when we kind of touted this plan, we talked about a reuse system and reusing the water for irrigation there. While the field's being so wet, we don't run the irrigation very often there. So then the tank gets full, and then what happens to the water? It starts nupping into the sewer, which is what we don't want to happen. the sewer, which is what we don't want to happen. From a salt standpoint, for a splash pad, I think it's just the corrosiveness of the salt system, it wouldn't work very well. What we are proposing, and that's what brought the price up a little bit on the splash pad, is adding a UV system, so it's treated UV-wise. It should hold our chlorine cost down.
Yep.
It'll help balance the system a lot better than just straight chlorine even. So, we are looking at adding a system that'll be a little more efficient than just straight chlorine. But we kind of explored every option as we kind of worked our way through this, and we really feel like this is the most, one, the most cost-effective, two, the most environmentally sound approach to having a splash pad.
And just looking at that photo of the equipment is like, I can't believe you've got that working this long. It's so past its prime, but thanks.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes, thank you. Very thorough. I'm always impressed with how much back work you guys do on this and the engagement. You did a really nice job with the community engagement piece, and I, a couple of things. I think the site planning is a really good idea. You know, I like that idea of having it all come together like that, and, you know, the pool, I'm actually glad, because I do get concerned about the liability side of that from the city standpoint. You're right, you know, it will have less, you know, since we don't have a lifeguard there, and so, and the splash pad is just a great replacement for that, and I really like the idea that it's going to accommodate a wider range of ages. I think there's some parents that actually like doing it, too. And, but I do also agree that not doing the north parking lot and putting off the soccer field for now, because it's, and I'm glad you're using some of the park dedication funds, because you're right, that's very narrow when we can actually use that. So, it's nice that you find a very appropriate time to use that and that the CIP number there. So, that, the whole thing is coming together, I think, really well, so very much in favor with the, you know, what you are proposing and the way it's structured, so, thank you.
Right. Councilmember Strong?
I just wanted to point out for the public, in our notes, it indicated that there is a push button, so the water would not be circulating 24/7, but the people would turn it on as they were there.
Absolutely.
So.
Correct. And then, there's a time clock on that as well, so we can set the parameters, splash pads only open from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM, so we don't have people there in the middle of the night pushing the button and using the splash pad as well.
Right, right. I just, maybe the public wasn't aware, but that was something that was important mention for just use of energy and everything else. And I know a lot of people indicated that there's no things anywhere like it, and Minneapolis continues to invest in their waiting pools, but again, they're either used all the time or they're never used, and it really seems to vary. And I do agree with Councilmember Schroder as far as safety. You know, we've had some complaints about some residents feeling like they needed, should have a safety phone there and other things, and hopefully, this addresses that safety feature. And also, I think, having it behind the building and off the street adds a level of, hopefully, a little bit of a level for safety for parents whose kids, I've seen kids kind of dodge in and out through there, as, because they parked on the street so they can be close, and then little kids going into the street. And there are some kind of blind corners in there as people are coming around. So, I think, appreciate that it's back, and then maybe the parents can utilize the park building for changing and things a little bit more than maybe they do now.
Other questions, comments?
I just had a question, just a kind of a bigger-picture question, on the total balance right now in the park dedication fund?
Yeah.
In round numbers?
Yeah, just over $2 million.
Okay, so it's not like we're depleting it down to zero by doing this project?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, good, good to know. Appreciate that. All right. Well, I believe that the request is for the council to weigh in and hopefully support the plan, including the steps of engagement this year and all those things. Do we have a motion from the council?
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Schroder, second by Councilmember Graff. By a hair. Discussion on the motion, Councilmember Schroder as the maker of the motion.
No, I think it's a great idea. Looking forward to it being installed.
All right. Councilmember Graff?
I just think you do such a good job on community engagement on these projects, and that just helps us so much on the council, because once these are in, people are thrilled. And I know, Mr. Johnson, that there are people that are saying they want that waiting pool, but after a year or two, they're going to be thrilled with that. I mean, just from the Sunset Park that you were mentioning, and all that we had to go through with there as far as community engagement, it really paid off, and that's what makes your department so successful, in my opinion.
Other discussion on the motion?
I just note in the 2010 vision that we had acquired that property next door as part of this park plan, and so it's too bad we weren't able to do something like that. So, I know the.
Right. I don't think they actually, it was desired.
It was a concept plan, yes.
Yeah.
Important to note, yes.
Yeah, no, no, no. No, it was, it was planned in here, but not, didn't happen. But I do hope that maybe, I know the Parks and Rec Department, or Commission mentioned that maybe we could be more proactive, and I don't know that these things come up very often, but hopefully, we can continue to know and see if there's anything we can do, and those opportunities might arise or not arise as we follow.
Yeah. No, I think that was a case where we were a very willing buyer, and the seller was not a very willing seller, so there was, there was a gap. Yes, yes. Other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously. That's all guidance is provided, and we look forward to the next steps coming forward.
Thank you.
Yep. Thanks, everyone.
All right. Next is a discussion about implementation of the local sales tax in support of the maintenance facility project. I'll turn it over to C. Manfred Trudgeon for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be real brief, and this is a pretty straightforward conversation. As, as you know, we had one of our sales tax referendum questions pass, and so, in order for us to effectuate the actual collection, we need to notify the Minnesota Department of Revenue at least 90 days before we want to start a collection. We have to pass an ordinance and send some other information, all that information. This is in the pack, and we did discuss that on January 13th. So, I'm just coming in at the meeting in January 13th, there was some thought that maybe we should bring that forward before April 1st for consideration, so we can begin collection on July 1st. And so, I'm just bringing the conversation forward. I have included the ordinance just as information, but if this is something the council wants to bring forward to a March meeting, so we start collecting sales tax on July 1st, 2025 for the project. If we don't do that, the next date, we would need to keep in mind, before July 1st, we have to send something down to the council, to the Minnesota Department of Revenue for collection October 1st, 2025. So, we are incurring costs, obviously, for the sales tax with the architect as one example. We have sufficient funds to carry that until such time where we would get the sales tax and reimburse it. So, you could look at it either way. We can have the money in hand here, so we have those things, or we can look to reimburse ourselves down the road. I know there's still some outstanding questions as well as about how it's all going to go, so I'm just bringing this forward. And from a staff's perspective, I, I think, I don't have a strong opinion either way. We can get it done right now and start collecting that, but if you want to wait for more clarity on the project, that's certainly understandable. We can do that. So, just looking for some direction.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. Are there thoughts from the council as to timing of the implementation of the sales tax? Councilmember Graff?
We are incurring costs, because we agreed to have that architect's, the RFP, go out. So, those could be paid out of that sales tax.
Yes, absolutely.
Amount.
Well, to the extent that it's about the maintenance.
Exactly.
I can feel the city attorney's eyes looking at me.
Oh.
So can I. I said it next to her, but I can't see her.
Yeah, yeah. So, as long as it's connected to the maintenance operations center, correct.
And the other thing is, I think, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like we have to do something with the Public Works Building, so I, I'm kind of of the mind, let's start collecting the tax. It's going to be spent one way or the other. The rest of these items are going to come into play as we go along, and we'll collect more information. I think as a council, we can make those decisions together.
All right. Other thoughts, Councilmember Schroder?
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Graff, because it's not a if we're going to incur expense, we already are. And so, we may not have all our details figured out, but we know it's not going to be, yeah, the expenses aren't going to stop coming in. So, I guess at this point, I don't know why we wouldn't go ahead and have this put in place.
Other thoughts, councilmembers? All right. Any objection to, this would come back, then, as something we'd look at in March to be ready for that April 1st?
We need to publish the ordinance and all that stuff, but, yeah.
Doesn't sound like there's objection to that. Councilmember Bauer, thoughts?
Just want to vote that I agree that we should begin collecting the sales tax. We are incurring costs. We are, we have a maintenance facility that does need replacement. We will be going forward, so we should start collecting.
All right. We have provided direction.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next on the agenda is a request to declare a vacancy for one more opening on the Planning Commission. Mr. Trudgeon?
Yes, Karen Schaffhausen from the Planning Commission is resigning. She has two years left on her term. We'd like the council to declare a vacancy. As you know, you're in the process of recruitment, so I think there were three vacancies in the Planning Commission, if you remember, so this is going to be the fourth one. And then, as we, as the council looks to fill those vacancies, we fill four vacancies instead of three. But we need to officially declare the vacancy for that to happen.
All right. Questions from the council, or a motion to officially declare that vacancy?
Oh, second.
Moved by Councilmember Graff, second by Councilmember Strong. Discussion on the motion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously. That vacancy is declared. That brings us to consideration of city council minutes. We have.
Can we go back to the eight council direction? Or no, you want?
No, council direction is only there if we have a council initiated item from a past meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, we have that under 11, otherwise.
Okay.
So, consideration of minutes. Once again, we've got the council minutes from February 10th and from January 27th, sort of in backwards order there. Any additional changes or corrections beyond what we've had to date, or a motion to approve as presented?
I'd move to approve both.
Second.
Right. It's been moved by Councilmember Schroder, second by Councilmember Bauer, to approve both sets of minutes as presented. Discussion on that motion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously. Those minutes are approved. That then brings us to our consent agenda. Our relatively short one this evening. Mr. Trudgeon, can you bring those items forward?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 10A approves payments in the amount of $1,217,048.61. Item 10B approves two temporary gambling permits, one for international union of operating engineers, Local 49, for a raffle at Midland Hills Country Club on July 21st of this year, and the other for the Minnesota Mighty Duck Program for fundraiser with tip boards and raffle at BDL Club on March 29th, 2025. Item 10C approves the purchase of encrypted radios for the police department and for purchase of firefighter turnout gear and duct work cleaning at the Roseville Skating Center. And finally, item 10D approves entering into an Ethernet transport, a network transport services agreement with the Roseville School District for the use of city fiber to connect their schools. The city has allowed the school district to use the city fiber lines for many years. The current five-year agreement is expiry in this June, and this approval will extend it for another five years. The city, excuse me, receives another, receives $77,184 annually from the school district under this agreement, and that is the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Second.
Right. It's been moved by Councilmember Strong, second by Councilmember Graff, to approve the consent items as outlined. Discussion on that motion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously. Those items are approved. Next is the future agenda review, and Mr. Trudgeon is changing venue for that?
Yeah, my mouse wasn't cooperating. I'll just stay down here. So, we do have a meeting next Monday, and we will be receiving a presentation from Twin Cities North, Chamber Commerce, just a short presentation on their work. We look to appoint commissioners, so remember that tally sheet to get that information in if you can by Wednesday, and look to have the 2024 Cash Reserve Fund Report, and also look to approve six hotel licenses. We're going to do them in stages. We have a couple more that we're working through, and probably wrap it up at the March 24th council meeting for those. If you remember, it starts April 1st is when the licensing period is, so. Then, we have a little bit of a break, but March 17th, we have an EDA meeting. We'll talk about the housing market study again, also consider amendments to the TIF note for the harbor development. Then, at the regular council meeting, we hope to award the contract for architectural services for what we just talked about, the whole project. We also would like to discuss massage therapy establishments and CAPS. We continue to see a lot of people applying, and just really a struggle to keep on top of the variety of applicants and people. So, I'd like to at least have a conversation about that, and then there might be some more amendments to the code as well. So, just a beginning conversation. And hopefully, we can get an update on the strategic plan. We certainly can give you information that we've been working on to date. We are meeting Thursday? Thursday. Wednesday, Thursday, with Mary Kay Delvo to work on that for half a day, so we should have some good outcomes from that. And then, I just note the regular meetings, we don't have a full agenda, but we talked about the ethics training earlier, that's April 9th here in this chamber, and we'll get more information about that as soon as it gets a little bit closer. And that's the future agenda.
Right. And the April 9th is also the new commissioner training, the same evening as the ethics training.
Yeah, we still try to do that. And then, we also do the chair, vice chair.
Right, okay. Lots of training that evening. All right. Questions on the upcoming agenda? All right. Thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. Do we have any communications reports, announcements, or council initiated items for future meetings? Councilmember Schroder?
Yes, I just wanted to thank everyone. After a little gentle nudging, we got everyone who sent in their reviews of our city manager. And so, we will, Councilmember Bauer and I will be working together to get that, and then we'll be meeting with Pat to do the initial, you know, pulling things together. And then, obviously, then we'll be meeting as a council then, once we pull all that information together. So, anyways, again, thank you. I will say all the department has got their stuff in way ahead of the council.
Sounds about right.
So, anyways, thank you.
All right. Other council initiated items or reports, announcements? Councilmember Graff?
Northeast Youth and Family Services is having their annual luncheon on May 14th, and it will be at the Badness Heights Commons again. I will give you all that information again, but I thought I'd get it on your calendars now, so that you have the information, and I will be sending out information to the department heads.
Sounds good. I like that venue, too. I thought that worked really well.
Yeah, it's a good venue. We're going to have a good speaker.
All right. Other announcements, communications?
I had a lot of comments and questions about the status of Harmar Mall, and I don't know if there's anything that we as a council can learn from the city manager and communications about that, but I think there's been so many, and you know I live by there, so I can't really go anywhere without someone mentioning it, but the rumors are running wild. I don't know how much of this is reflected in actual things that people are hearing, but it's going to be a high-rise for seniors. Nobody, the roof leaks, there's rats, there's, I mean, it's like all over. So, I think it would be good if we maybe understood what recourse we would have as that moves forward, just because there's been a lot of interest from a lot of people and a lot of concern, and I think, given the growing vacancies, I think it's understandable. I also would like, I would love if as a council, we talk about, and I know we're wrapping up this round, so it maybe isn't worthwhile right now, but I think it would be good as a council to understand what role we should have in being part of an active recruitment for commissioners. If we've already talked with commissioners in an interview, if we should be encouraging them to change their interest in commissions, there's certainly people, I take the interview approach, like I'm interviewing someone for a job, so even though I think, hmm, they'd be better on this other commission, I don't interject that. And so, I think it would be good to know. I didn't see anything in any of our materials that indicated what our role should be in that, but I think it's good, I think we should still see it like a job interview, and so make sure that we're providing, I love that we have the consistent questions now, so everyone has equal access to the same questions, but I, I would really love to have a conversation as far as equity and consistency of who's offered what information and how. So, I would love to suggest that we put that on a future agenda.
I think we typically, after our appointment process, do sort of a check-in on what maybe needs to be improved, so I think that would be appropriate as part of that discussion.
All right.
All right. Other communications announcements, future agenda items? If not, we only have one other item on our agenda this evening, which is.
So moved.
All right. Moved by Councilmember Strong. No question to move that. Any second, second from Councilmember Schroder. No discussion, as always noted, on motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously, and we adjourned at 9:00.